I just need a motion then to reconvene to regular meeting.
Some of.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Sanz, seconded by Ms. Johnson. Roll call.
Boersma?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Here.
Travis? Simone Rogers?
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
We'll start with our pledge of allegiance and I'd like to lead us please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have the approval of our minutes?
Oh, yes, that's right.
Hey, just before we start, you know, both for members of the public, you know, on the live stream and our board, it's been a busy, busy week. And although Central took central stage today and a lot of information we're processing, we did lose a student this week. So we actually had a member of our community, Peyton Kirk, who was a senior. You know, one of our board members was in the CNA program with her at Wilco. And that's a loss. Whenever you have a student who faces a health condition and succumbs to it, that's a painful, painful thing for a school community. So many of you know we were dealing with that at the beginning of the week. So I think it appropriate just kind of get to a reverent space and just give a moment of silence for Peyton Kirk, for her family and for their loss. So if you just take a moment of silence, it'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, our sympathies goes out to the Kirk family. All right, next we'll go into our approval minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 2nd, 2023 Board Workshop?
I'll move.
Second. It's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and seconded by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions or additions to those minutes? Right, hearing none. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Boersma?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 11th Finance Facility Committee meeting?
Some of.
I'll second that motion.
And just a reminder to the board members, only members of that committee can vote. Others have to abstain because you're not on that committee. So that's Mr. Boersma, Mr. Navara, and Ms. Lopez Caneva. Others have to abstain because unless you're present at the meeting. And I believe you were present on September 11th.
Oh, that's when we had committee of the whole?
Was that the committee?
No, that was not committee of the whole. It was just Finance and Facility Committee meeting. So I believe only, you know, those, those members, Ms. Lopez Caneva, Mr. Boersma, and... Mr. Navara was not present. So only Mr. Boersma and Ms. Lopez Caneva can vote. But that is a quorum of your committee, so your approval, all other board members would have to abstain.
All right, roll call.
Shaw?
Abstain.
Navara?
Abstain.
Boersma?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 12th Curriculum Committee meeting?
Some of.
A second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Ms. Johnson. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Abstain.
Boersma?
Abstain.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Abstain. All right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October 23rd, 2023 Curriculum Committee meeting?
Some of.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Ms. Johnson. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Abstain.
Boersma?
Abstain.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Abstain. All right, moving on to our action on student number 205031512. And Shaw, Dr. Shaw, if you'd like to read the motion, please.
Sure. I move that based upon and after the board's consideration of evidence and testimony of the expulsion hearing held on November 1st, 2023, the Board of Education find that student number 205031512 has committed an act of gross misconduct as charged by the district's administration and that student number 205031512 came to school on October 19th, 2023 to sell and/or distribute with the intent to deliver drugs, steroids, narcotics, marijuana, look-alike drugs, and/or prescription drugs. Possession of paraphernalia used for the sale and distribution of drugs is in violation of the 2324 Student Behavior Code, pages 30 through 37 in the Porter Plan. I move that the Board of Education expel student number 205031512 for two years, but that expulsion be held in abeyance and student number 205031512 be administratively transferred to an alternative school as determined by the district's administration pursuant to Article 13A of the Illinois School Code. Prior to considering a recommendation for expulsion, the district's administration attempted other behavioral and disciplinary interventions and determined there are no other appropriate and available behavioral and disciplinary interventions, the interventions previously attempted with the student included. At the minimum, character education initiatives, character education rallies, dean office policy and procedure video, emotional management in PE, SWAT opportunities, porter pride recognition and tutoring opportunities, kitchen table, NHS tutoring, voluntary MIS tutoring, and compass time. Also, student teacher meetings, counselor contact meetings, conflict resolution services, parent teacher conferences, and letters sent to parent and restorative conferences. Removing student number 205031512 from the learning environment is in the best interest of the school because the student's continuing presence in school would pose a threat to the safety of other students, staff, and members of the school community, and/or would substantially disrupt, impede, and interfere with the operation of the school. The student of, or the duration of student number 205031512's expulsion is appropriate based on the gravity of the misconduct, the safety concerns and disruption caused by the misconduct, and prior interventions utilized to support the student and promote acceptable behavior and acceptable means of conflict resolution. The expulsion being held in abeyance is contingent upon the student's full participation in the alternative school program, including regularly attending school, complying with attendance policies, school rules, and any referrals for service or counseling made by the alternative school, and successfully completing the alternative school's curriculum. I further move that should student number 205031512 fail to fully participate in the alternative school program and the alternative school refers the student back to the district, student number 205031512 shall be immediately expelled from Lockport Township High School District Number 205 for the remainder of the district's, the district administration's recommended expulsion duration for two years.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Boersma. All right, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Boersma?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. Moving on to our discussion items.
Okay, as board members know, we really have two discussion items and then, then, then public comment. And I'll have Mrs. Kroy, if you can come on up and join us at the table. And we'll do some, you know, illustrations as well for you. You know, some of this will just be review, maybe just kind of warm you up, where we've been, what we've talked about so far. You know, the first is tax levy options, and then the second is talking about, you know, for a year and a half, we've been talking about renovating Lockport Central Campus. And that was, you know, front and center today when you have a 114-year-old building. Some of the things that a structure like, like that needs if we're going to continue on as a school. Public comments. And if I could just ask all the board members, your state conference is coming up. We have folders for you. If you could just pause before the end of the meeting so I can give you your materials. I won't see you until you're, you know, you won't be together until your, your state conference. So just to recap, where, where we've been, on September 18th, the board approved its budget. And the budget first and foremost is a phase where you lay out to the public the expenditures that you plan in, in this, this fiscal year. After approving a budget, you're now in the phase where you have to, you have to fund that budget. You have to decide what is it that you will do in order to fund the budget. There's a number of options at your disposal. Just to recap, that was September 18th when you approved the budget. October 2nd, we met as a committee, the whole, to really dig into and to look at four options. Option one, which was levy with a $30 million property, new property estimation. Option two was the revised new property estimation of $40 million that we received from the Wilco tax assessor. Option three was a discussion that we heard from the public of reducing the levy by $4.5 million. And then option four was starting to look at the idea of bond and interest abatement. So that was on October 2nd. When we left that table, the board really directed Mrs. Kroy and I to look at option two or to look at option, option four, which is the abatement strategy. At the October board meeting, we did come back to you with, with more on option two. But we also did the analytics on the recommendation in the budget hearing that we had on September 18th of what would happen if we did a $4.5 million reduction in the levy and use fund balances to do that reduction in the levy. Then we also went over the tax abatement strategy. You know, here we are tonight, and the goal tonight really would be directing us to bring to you on November 20th, a levy that would be your tentative levy. You are required in November to vote on a tentative levy. And then a final levy in December. So one of the things we hope is we can get a little bit of direction from you tonight. We're not voting on anything tonight. We're just discussing it on where you want to focus our efforts. In conversation with the number of you, and after October 16th, you asked us to dig deeper into the abatement strategy. So really, you know, we have all the information to kind of come back to you, the illustrations of other options. But for right now, I'll just zone in on what you asked, is a little bit more on a tax abatement strategy. So just to recap, there was some apprehension by some board members on October 16th because you saw in illustration, if you reduce the levy by $4.5 million, your fund balances begin to decline, all the way to the point where in 2029, if following a natural progression, you would have fund balances less than the budget that you just approved. So that was, caused you some distress. You expressed that, a concern that, that would lead us down to a financially unhealthy pattern. Deficit spending, reduction in programs, borrowing, those kind of things were a concern to you. So we'd really ask you to take a look at, at a tax abatement strategy. And the tax describes it, but I'll describe it to you. What a tax abatement strategy basically does is you would vote for the levy in option two. Then you would almost immediately abate back our bond and interest for next year. That's a one-year strategy. You could continue doing that in multiple years as you reassess your finances. A couple of things that, that we noticed, we provided you an illustration. This is the debt service abatement illustration for your finances, the same analytics that we use and used on, on other options. And what you might notice is, is the difference between this option and, for example, option two, which I could show you, is that the, the growth of our fund balances over time is just a little flatter. This presumes that you might do an abatement over multiple years, even though you would have to vote on a debt service abatement every single year. It's not, you're not voting, you know, this year for multiple years. You have to, have to do it, you know, in, in future years. Mrs. Kroy and I did an analysis. One of the concerns that we had is, you know, we'll talk about Central, but if you just pull Central out of it for a minute, you do have, according to our, our maintenance and facilities plan, you've got, and our architects know of this, you do have some things that are coming up that you would have to, in the next three or four years, you would have to fund anyway. And you've used a strategy of using fund balances to fund those. For example, we'd have to finish the roofing project here at East Campus. Our surface in the field house is, is due. It's due to be replaced. Our pro turf in the football field and track are at their end of life as well. And regardless of what happens with any kind of renovation at Central, you need a new roof at, at Central, and maybe more. We believe, based on what we know today, that you would, with a debt service abatement strategy, still be able to address those costs, on what we know about those costs right now. So you would still have, you know, some income growth, not at as, as quick of a rate, but you would also still be able to have fund balances to address those capital projects. Another benefit is that you would approve the levy as it is. So next year, your base is that base. You saw in that other illustration, if you lower your base by $4.5 million, it begins to have an impact every subsequent year because that $4.5 million lowering of your base, there's not a way to recapture that. So let me, you know, Mrs. Kroy, if anything's on your mind, you know, just in our conversations, things you want to share with the board?
You already explained the pieces, the technical pieces that I would have pointed out as far as what would, what the board would approve, would approve the levy, like you said, in option two. And then it's a separate, it's by board resolution that you do the abatement piece. So you explained that piece. It does give us more flexibility because you abate annually. You can reassess every year. So it gives the board flexibility to decide, yep, we can continue doing it. I find this is still okay. Or no, this year we choose not to. You like, you get to choose. Depends on what CPI looks like that year, what costs look like. You know, there's a lot of things that we don't know that might happen. So you, you just leave you the options, right? What kind of questions do you have?
As far as the projects that we have on there, as far as the field house floor, sorry, I don't have my glasses.
Here, I'm gonna.
Thank you. The roof replacement, things like that. Like, I know that typically when the public hears things like field house floor, track, turf, they think of a cosmetic thing. But ultimately, depending on the lifespan of those things and where they are, it does become a safety concern for our athletes. So if the track needs to be resurfaced and it is not, you can cause injury to our athletes.
And it's not just athletes either, though. All of those surfaces are used for, our, our students go outside for PE when weather's permitting on that turf, like, very often. More than half the year, they're out there using that turf.
Yeah, previously I've worked at a school where, you know, some of these things weren't addressed and they had to find other locations to hold their competitions and could not use it for PE perfectly.
And, and typically, for example, with the pro turf or the track surface, but more, you know, let's just take the pro turf as an example, what it begins, you know, as it degrades, as the pellet degrade, as the turf itself degrades, it becomes slippery. And that's where, you know, you worry about athletes, soccer players, lacrosse players, football players, PE. That's usually associated with, with joint injury, ankle, knee. Obviously, if you, if you fall, injuries associated with that. So, you know, we try, you know, we advise that once we receive advice and we become, you know, aware that you're at the end of life of a roof or a pro turf field, that, that you properly, you know, once you become aware, that you, you properly address that. We also think, you know, with an abatement strategy, because you would have to reassess that every year, you have an opportunity, as, as Mrs. Kroy said, you know, to assess economic conditions, assess what the consumer price index is. We would suspect that it's going to come down to about 3% next year. So that will limit your, your levy next year. You know, there's a deliberate federal effort to bring the consumer price index down, and that, that's happening. So we'll, we'll, we'll see that. Things that come up that are unexpected, you know, today's the day to talk about things that are unexpected and, you know, gives you some maneuverability. There's also the question about the things that you want to accomplish as Board of Education. You've talked about the importance of school services. You've talked about the importance of mental health services for, for students. That's primarily in staff. And I've alerted the board to, you know, my belief that we're, we're heading to, to a daily bell schedule crisis. And what I mean by that is we have incoming new state requirements that will make it very hard for our students to have a, a full choice of programs and, and fulfill those requirements, a world language requirement, a science requirement within the, the bell schedule that we offer right now. Students have six class section selections, but one is PE. And so they really have five academic selections. They could certainly graduate within that. But they'll have to be registering for those state requirements, which will draw registrations and enrollments away from other programs. It would make, you know, people like Ms. Del Ponte, who is in the CNA program, harder for her to accomplish her senior year requirements and go to Wilco every afternoon.
But then we would have to have greater selection for summer classes then. If students cannot complete certain classes within the regular school year, then that just means they, if, would have to complete those requirements during summer class. Am I correct in saying that?
That, that's a strategy that you could do.
But that would cost more.
That would be a cost as well to you because, and you would have to do some policy revision because some classes or graduation requirements are not on the board in the summer. So you'd, you'd have to dig in and you'd have to, you know, summer school is, is not required. So not all students might be able to reach that. There's cost involved in summer school for students to take it. And then there's staffing. So that's all, that's, that could be a viable solution. But that's something we're going to have to come up with a solution. It could be, you know, and both. It could be changing the school bell schedule and offering a more robust summer school. It could be that and a zero hour. But all of those would, would be additional costs to the district.
The four items you got listed up there, they don't all necessarily have to be done the same thing?
No, Ms. Johnson.
So you can spread them out?
In the projection, they're actually spread out over the years, correct? That's the type of thing. We would do one of those type of projects each year because they're big enough. They're bigger than the, the routine maintenance type projects that Mr. Thompson's department handles every year. So that's, yes, we need to spread those out.
So what we're looking for tonight is just a little bit of direction. I think Mrs. Kroy and I feel, feel confident about a debt service abatement. That's what you asked us to work on the most. So we're just looking, you know, for direction tonight on what we should bring you November 20th. With all the other options, I could certainly open these up. You know, with all the other tax levy options, you might recall this, this was the option, if you went with option two, where you, this is all the options. This is just a memo that's provided for you. Not the most, most readable, you know, from here, but certainly if you're, you're, you're just to review them. You know, option one, budget as presented with $30 million in, in new property. Option two, the budget as presented with $40 million in new property. In a debt service abatement, we'd ask you to vote on this to set your base, but then abate back. Option three, approve a 2023 tax levy that's equal to the 2022 tax levy, but include the $40 million property estimate. And then, so that would be keeping it sort of, they're close to same. And then this would be what we started working on with the debt service abatement.
I think as board, we did talk about it last month, where we did say, can the school operate, you know, with that abatement? And we did specifically say that, you know, we would, we would be able to do.
That's what that projection is intended to show, that, that we would be able to operate with that without significant use of the funding.
These two illustrations, the first illustration shows you sort of the, the path that we would predict of your finances if you approved option two. So you can see that your, your income, your income grows steadily. And then we did do this, use the same analytic tool. And then we did do this, use the same analytic tool to illustrate if you just lowered your levy right now by four point five million dollars. You can see the aggregate decline that you would experience as, as that sort of, you know, your base, you drop your base and then your base, you know, is lower every, every, every year from there on out. You'd have a declining likely consumer price index. So that's what created some alarm for you, looking out to the twenty twenty. Just to compare this to the debt service abatement option, you can just see the difference where it's just a little bit more, more flat. So what, you know, just, just looking to the, you know, questions that you have, you know, what you'd like us to, we're really at the point where we need to, in the next two weeks, bring you a tentative levy to vote on. And typically, the tentative levy, unless we have new data or new information or new analysis, becomes the levy that we propose that you vote on in, in December. So just, just looking for some direction for me tonight, what, what you'd like us, maybe just hearing some board voices, what you'd like us to scope in on. Of all of these options, we have to bring you one to tentatively vote on on, on November twentieth.
With the abatement, regardless, regardless which option it was, does, it would have to be voted on every year then?
You, you would, Mr. Borsma. So, you know, you would vote on the levy. The levy that we would be proposing was the one you saw in option two with the forty million dollars of property. And then you would immediately vote on a resolution to abate the bond and interest back to the taxpayers. So in essence, one way, this is an extremely crude way of thinking about this, but, you know, you sort of list the full price and then you discount.
Discount, yeah.
And then obviously, it's a given that we do, the Will County Tax Assessor does a final adjustment for what new property really is. So they, they would, they would adjust that anyway. That's a natural process they do every year. Wouldn't change how much we abate back because we know what our bond and interest costs we will be next year. That's what we're discounting back to the taxpayers.
Right, because technically what you're approving in that abatement is it's a resolution to not levy the bond and interest levy that we need for the next year's payment. Basically saying, even though we've already previously approved when we issued those bonds years ago, that for twenty twenty-three, we would levy one point four million dollars rounded number. That abate, that resolution that the board would be approving is saying, no, for twenty twenty-three, don't levy that amount. Does that make sense?
And provide it back to the next year.
And it's.
Because it's, so that's what it does, right? By not levying the bond and interest piece, they're only levying the operating piece. They're not levying both pieces that they would normally levy, right? Yes. So, and then you do that every year because then the following year, you would say, if you chose to, if the board chose to do it again at that time, the twenty twenty-four levy that we had previously approved to pay for bond payments, you know, you would, you would do each tax year at a time.
In, in this model, what's built into this model is a presumption that you would be approving future debt service payments, that you would be using as a strategy. Now, one reason we feel confident, obviously, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, but we generally, the way that we handle finances here, we, we outperform our budget really every year. That's just people being astute spenders, astute, you know, budgeters. People are good with, with their financial performance. So every year, we outperform the budget that we put in front of you. So we're, we have no reason to assume that suddenly our, our staff isn't going to do that. This also does, does provide that kind of cushion for the unexpected as well as the major projects that you would hope to accomplish to keep your facilities where, where you'd like to have them. But it is a year-to-year strategy.
It is, it is. And like I said, we're, we have the unexpected, you know. This morning, you know, I'm sure, feel for Dr. McBride and all our staff that had to work all day today, you know, dealing with Central. But yeah, we just have to be prepared for the unexpected. And that's why I said, I always don't like to use the cash reserves that we have for operating expenses because we have those unexpected things that happen, like, like Central. You know, we just don't not know. If we had a crystal ball, fine, but we don't. We just do it now.
But isn't cash reserves.
Yes.
There for emergencies?
Wouldn't they be covered under the insurance though? Like, what happened today?
Yes, it would be covered under insurance, but I don't see our insurance company issuing a check for tomorrow, like, right away.
Right, and the major facility issues, like, you know, if we just pivot away from, you know, Central entirely, you know, new, finishing the roofing project here or, you know, resurfacing an athletic surface, that, you know, is just separate from insurance. That's just upkeep that we have to, we have to do. And so those are the kind of expenses. You'll have those coming up, you know, just constantly. It's like homeownership. You know, most of us are looking at, when do we have to replace our furnace? When do we have to replace our air conditioner, roof, windows? That's the buses in our case. Those are all expenses that, that you have to manage as a board and anticipate.
Not only that, but then we talked about sign, I mean, you mentioned about summer school, you're adding those classes. And then you mentioned, yes, it's going to take extra funds. We talked about adding in our board workshop, we talked about adding because, you know, more, more school hostlers to our staff. I mean, that just takes more, you know, funds, you know, on that, on that end of it. So, yes.
Under this scenario, would it potentially allow us to have more counts?
We, we would have to obviously take a look, right? You know, there is a tightness between this abatement and between, you know, if I just sort of, kind of bump out, you know, if you just sort of take a look. Really what you're trending is about seventy-six thousand, seventy-five, seventy-six thousand and seventy-nine thousand. Just to be clear, those figures are not separate somewhere in separate investment from your budget. Those are figures that are covering your budget, leaving cash on hand, really handling everything, every priority that you've asked us. Cash on hand, cash reserves, funding budget, funding capital projects are all in those figures. That's, that's, you're not looking at, when we say fund balances, that is not excess money in addition to the budget. So I want to be really clear with that.
I have a quick question. Isn't summer school paid for by the students?
It is.
It's not necessarily something that is, like, part of our, that graph?
It is, but we, we do.
Or is it not?
They don't charge in a way, we don't charge in a way, Mr. Navara, that we're still paying quite a bit of overhead. We're paying for busing, we're paying for custodial, we're paying for staff. So we're not charging a fee to our students. We're, we're really even breaking even on, on summer school. So you, I think you'd have to revisit, you know, if you have expansive offerings and you offer, you know, you go instead of a school day scheduling, you go with something like summer school and zero hour, you're going to have to take a very careful look at, at expanding how you would expand your operations. You might have to look at the fee that you charge students. As you know, we try to keep fees low. We haven't increased, just the, the registration fee, I can't remember, it's about twelve, fifteen years. So you'd have to have a conversation about that as a board. So, so this kind of takes, takes your, your, your income at about, you know, between seventy-six and seventy-nine thousand.
What option was that, was that two?
This is the debt service option, which would be loosely option four, we're calling it option four point five. This would be option two, where you levy at six point two eight percent. You levy the budget plus the forty million dollars in new property. And you can say, see that this takes you from seventy-six thousand more to eighty-four, seventy-six thousand, seventy-six million to eighty-four million. So if you kind of look at an endpoint, it's the difference between seventy-nine million and eighty-four million. And if you think about it, you're progressively, that difference, you're abating that back to taxpayers. And really what you're saying is that you're going to pay your bond and interest payments through your operating budget. That makes sense. Rather than putting those bond and interest payments into the levy for taxpayers, you're, you would be directing us to put that in our budget. And one, yeah, one interesting and to make it more rich and complex is that if you do, we have actually very low debt right now, so our bond and interest payments are very low. Depending on where we go with Central Campus, it's likely in almost any scenario that I can imagine, you, you would be issuing bonds. So actually, your abatement, you have more maneuverability on what you can abate back because your bond and interest payments will grow. There is a limit to how many bond and interest payments we can have. It's not unlimited, but oddly enough, you would, you would have more maneuverability in, in the future.
So what, at the November board meeting, the board would approve a tentative levy. The abatement is just a resolution, it's a one-time, there's no tentative abatement. So that, that would be approved in December with the final levy. So one action in November to approve a tentative levy and then two action items in, in December, which would be the levy, final approval and, and abatement resolution.
Now, obviously, we don't want to bring to you that tentative levy, if that's, you know, not what the board is, is ultimately interested in or there's lingering questions or we haven't provided, you know, answers. But that's exactly how we'd lay it out. We would put this, this would be the levy that we would present to you. And, and as Mrs. Kreid said, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't put the abatement because that's a single resolution that doesn't require a tentative.
We, we can write that in the narrative to the board.
We could certainly write that in the narrative, that's the intent. You know, we'd ask you to prove this as the tentative if you want to go with this strategy. And then you would see two back-to-back votes, a levy vote and then a resolution to abate. So that's, that's what you would see in December.
Does the board feel comfortable with that?
What was four point, you said four point five?
Uh, this, the four point five is, we're just calling that, Mr. Borsma, because we have an option. This is the debt service abatement, just a finer point on the debt service abatement. What we did is we really took more careful after October sixteen, when, when the board asked us to provide more information, what we did is we just put a finer point on how much debt service we anticipate. That's, that's the amount that we would bait back. So we wanted to get that to a, a finer estimate. You know, just get these analytics as clear as we can based on what we know, you know, right now for you.
Does the board feel about that option?
Can we just, so I couldn't tell the difference too much between option four and option two? I'm just trying to keep it simple.
Right, option, option two is no abatement. So if you just imagine, and this is what option two looks like. Right, this, this is kind of visually, Mr. Borsma, option two. And this is visually option four. So, option two is no abatement to taxpayers. Option four is abatement of, of bond and interest payments to taxpayers. That's, that's a really good question.
And I think that, you know, as a board, I think we were more concerned, can we operate with that abatement? And you said yes. And I feel, you know, I feel comfortable because we didn't, you know, we, we listened to our, you know, community members as far as that. You know, the tax levy. How does the rest of the board members feel? Are you comfortable with that?
That's a start. There will be more questions that pop up and we could talk about that before the next meeting.
Mm-hmm, yeah. But at least this will be, you know, put on as far as a tentative, you know, levy for November and we can have another discussion on it. But yes, it'd just be something that, you know, we just want to be comfortable for them, for the administrators to go forward.
I think it's a nice compromise, especially since we're still able to operate with relatively, you know, good leeway. As well as recognizing the fact that there are people in our community who are struggling. And if we do too much, they just leave. If they feel like we're not listening to them, it doesn't even have anything to do with, like, financial strains or anything. But if they just feel that we're not listening to them, they just leave and we lose out on that anyway. Some people are, some, as you guys could say, it's probably not a majority, but some people are a little bit frustrated and that small minority could, like, you know, tip, be the reason.
So I said, I think that once we listened, you know, to some of our community members, that's why, you know, we went back to our, you know, to Dr. McBride and said, you know, can we do this and can we operate with an abatement?
So, you know, and, yeah, so just to, you know, check for understanding and certainly the student board members, if you have questions. You know, one, you're asking us to bring back the debt service abatement option. So I just want to be clear on the twentieth, that you're asking us to bring, bring that back to you, the finest point we can put on, on those analytics. And then second, you know, just I would ask board members, you might not, we're still in a phase, we have a couple of weeks. Time is closing in on us because, you know, November, we approve a tentative, but really a December. And you all know just personally how quickly the time between Thanksgiving and the Christmas holidays move. We don't, once we get in that zone between November twentieth and your meeting on December eighteen, we just lose a lot of wiggle room to explore any other options. And I don't know if there's any other options that anybody wants us to consider, you know, at this table. You know, right now, I'm walking away and Mrs. Kreid and I are giving you the best analytics we can on this, this tax abatement strategy.
And so the procedural piece of it is I, there will have to be a, an ad, a black box ad, after, after the board approves a tentative, the timeline is, I want to say it's fourteen days, but I don't, don't quote me on that. I got to look at the specifics of how far ahead of the December meeting. I have to put that in the paper. But there'll be then the notice that here's what the board expects to approve for the levy. And then there'll be a public hearing at the beginning of the December meeting. Then the board would vote.
So I'm, I'm feeling that we're moving on to agenda number.
Two.
Number two.
And to Central Campus.
Yeah, Central Campus. Well, let's, you know, I think this would be, you know, also a good time. Before we get in this, we're going to have our friends from DLA, why don't you come on over and join us at the table? Or just, if anyone, just, Mrs. Kreid, why don't you just move over one seat, you know? Yeah, that's what I recommend. So let me give you just a little bit of update, since we're all together. I know board members have received texts from me throughout the day. I know board member, you know, we've, we've put out to the public a press release. I know that we've had media coverage. I know that we've put out quite a few, three communications to our parents today. So let me just first start.
And I assume we've updated our architect about the situation that happened?
Oh, yeah, Eric Sickbert's been here all day. So, just in the media, I just want to kind of give you a picture of the next twenty-four hours so you understand what's going to happen. And then we'll kind of walk past over the events today, what we know. You know, we're really trying to, and one of the things I always encourage people in situations like this is operate from what you know, not from speculation. It can really put you on, on firm ground if you begin to speculate and you run up the ladder of inferences of what's happening. It could lead you to something that's not actually the case. I would say as a preference, and I don't mean to be a voice of gloom and doom, but as you know, for a year and a half, one of the things that I've shared with the board is, in the past, the board has brought to the community six ballot referendum issues for a new building. And six times, the community rejected that in a democratic process. Last fall, I came to you and, and really said, we really need to take a look, you know, at Central Campus so that we don't find ourselves in a hundred and fourteen-year-old building in a situation where we cannot occupy the building. We are at that place. We do have a situation where we know at least temporarily, for sure tomorrow, and maybe a few more days, we cannot occupy that building. And we'll, we'll, we'll talk into that. You know, so we do have a thousand students right now that we'll have to be really carefully planning, you know, what's next for them. So in the next twenty-four hours, tomorrow, Central Campus students only will be doing online learning. We'll be using our e-learning. We'll be using our e-learning plan. We've been in conversation with the Regional Office of Education on two levels, using our e-learning plan. But then also, it's actually the Regional Office of Education that decides if the building is occupiable. And I'll explain to you the conversations we've had with them. So in the next 24 hours, we've worked out busing. We've worked out students who travel between both the buildings. We've worked out traveling teachers. We've worked out where teachers will, tomorrow, as we did in the pandemic, teachers can teach from home online under appropriate conditions. Many will probably be here. Part of that is that we don't necessarily have spots, places for people, you know, to work and to teach. And that was very successful in the pandemic, and we're doing that. Tomorrow, there'll be quite a bit of assessment, quite a bit of planning that will take place. We'll pivot from, you know, making sure that we continue school operations tomorrow. We'll pivot into looking into the next week. And then eventually, you know, taking the spyglass and looking into the vast future. Just to rewind the tape and kind of just bring everybody into the space of what happened today. You know, the day started with one of our math teachers went into the math office on the third floor of Central and noticed a closed door in room 310. And then, under the threshold, there was debris, unusual debris coming out. And she looked in, opened the door a crack and looked in, and saw that the entire, you know, two-inch-thick plaster, and that's, you know, this is a decorative ceiling. We also have drop ceilings in all of our classrooms. They're decorative primarily, and a whole lighting in primarily. But above that, from the wooden rafters up there on the third floor, that plaster had come down. And as you can imagine, it's very heavy. It brought everything down with it in that classroom. She alerted the administration. We had administrators on site. The first thing we did is we asked all students to leave the third floor out of an abundance of caution. We put them in the newest section of the building, which is the 1950s section of the building. And then we called the fire department. We reached out to the city of Lockport, their building inspector. They immediately came out. I was on scene. Bill Thompson was on scene and assessed the conditions. Ultimately, we decided that we likely have other compromised classrooms. Can't scientifically, but just on visual inspection. And just, you know, anytime that you think you have any kind of safety concern, we really decided, out of an abundance of caution, dismissed school. And in many ways, treated almost like a fire drill, where we put students and staff outside, right? And luckily, just really tribute, you know, we have bus drivers extraordinary. We were able to assemble all of our bus drivers who do freshman routes. They were there, and by about nine o'clock, we had dismissed. We had three students who were still waiting a pickup. We obviously have walkers. We have students who, you know, get picked up by their parents. But we, you know, were able to do that. Obviously, the whole time communicating with parents. First, we just communicated what happened, what we knew. And we always stick with what we know. What we knew at the time was that that ceiling had collapsed. So we have a classroom where the ceiling collapsed. Next communication was that we were sending students home in order to absolutely be safe. Certainly, there are newer sections of the building. Certainly, on visual inspection, it looked safe, but you just can't take a chance. That would be my, you know, recommendation, my opinion of the board. And then third, bless you. Third communication was that we were planning an e-learning day tomorrow. Throughout the day, we worked with the press. Throughout the day, we did a press release and got a great deal of help from Homer Township Fire, Lockport Township Fire, Mayor Stride, City Manager Ben Benson, really Rich Rang, police chief, just a lot of help. Once we got the building, and the building is closed. It's limited access now. Administrators and appropriate personnel, you know, that's it. We have brought on-site forensic architects, structural engineers, and environmental engineers. What do those folks do? Forensic architects are trying to figure out, why did this happen? We have our suspicions. I'll probably let the architects, you know, talk about what we suspect happened with the construction methods in 1909, 1928. The structural engineers are really there to look at the entire building. And then the environmental engineers are really, you know, whenever we have loose material, we have to make sure there's no hazardous, you know, materials in those loose materials, either for respiration or, you know, for contact. Good news, we at least now know that we do not have any loose asbestos in the materials that came down. So that's good. Obviously, we'd have to change our game plan if we had that. We couldn't expose anyone to that kind of loose dangerous asbestos. It will likely take us, my feeling, unless directed differently from the board tonight, you know, it's my belief that we should do a full analysis of every space, every classroom, you know, stem to stern at Central. To do that will take us three to four days is our estimate right now. We'll obviously know more tomorrow when some of those personnel are on site. All of those organizations, they need more people. You know, it's not one engineer with a flashlight. It's lots of people coming in into the building to do that work and really inspect. Eric, do you want to make me mention Eric?
Are there police involved with the investigation at all?
Police?
Yeah.
It really wouldn't, you know, at this stage, Rich Rang did not initiate anything like that. We don't have any reason to believe there's vandalism or somebody did something. You know, there's nothing the forensic architects have said this looks like.
There were no witnesses at all?
It would likely, we could probably pinpoint when it happened.
We could. We actually saw have.
Video.
We have video in the hallways, and they're motion sensed at night. They don't often be able to respond to this. The motion sensor went off when the debris was flying under the door. So we have video showing that it came under the door. The door was closed. No one was in there. No one was in the hallway at the time. It's empty. You can see that when it happened. It was at about 10:09 last night.
Right, so we just don't have any, you know, the police.
I'm just wondering, who was in the school at the time?
Very few custodial people were there.
Right.
Right. There's going to be a lot of questions with that. Kids would have died today. If this ceiling would have fallen on them, they would have died.
Yeah.
So this is a very, very major issue.
Exactly.
And people are going to want answers. My kids don't even go here. It's bad. Really bad.
That's why we had the architect.
Exactly.
How?
I mean, I can do for you, Marty, because I'm just, just for the record, Michael Travis is on the phone. So he just called in. And he's due because of work.
Yeah, he's out of state on work.
Do we have a hole in the roof?
I'm sorry, what?
Was there a hole in the roof?
Not that we know of.
Okay. You sometimes, you know, like, you get a hole and in the water.
No, there was no water damage.
Typically, ceilings don't just fall.
Yeah, we probably should let the architects, you know, kind of explain.
Can I ask something real quick? Just a quick question. How old was the part that was compromised? And when was the last time? Was it renovated?
Yeah, this is the 1928 section of the building.
1928, and it was renovated? When was it last renovated?
It's just part of 1928.
It's 114 years old.
Okay.
Yeah, why don't you, you know, do you want to let Eric jump in and kind of share what they think?
Officer, we do have the, Dr. McBride has mentioned, we do have the forensic architects out there taking a look at everything. They are the scientists of this profession.
Could you speak up more, please?
Sure.
Could you speak up a little?
Sure. We have the forensic architects out there out there all day today reviewing that particular room, but also other classrooms within that floor as much as they could get in for the day. They are the scientists of this profession. They get more into the scientific aspects of architectural structure. They do have structural engineers on board. They have physics, biological, all those different types of scientists in their company to draw upon, to answer any of the questions that they might come up as they are reviewing a building, an architectural building. So WJE is the company that we've hired to, that the district has hired to come and take a look at that. Along with myself, I was out there as well to take a look at the instance and see what we think had happened and start developing a game plan to address it, make sure the building is safe. I could tell my observation as an architect, but they are the experts. So I don't know if you want me to portray what I thought possibly that occurred.
Right now, obviously, they're going to have the final say on why this happened, right? But the building inspector, you can share with the building inspector from Lockport, shared what the fire marshals, shared what you observed, you know, so we can at least give you a preliminary thought on what's going on.
Basically, what we call that is a catastrophic failure. It's something that doesn't give any warning, and all of a sudden, it's fine, and all of a sudden, it's not. And it is the age of the building that's original plaster that was put in 114 years ago. We are assuming it definitely looks like that. How it failed was that we have the plaster tied to metal ath, which is then metal ath is anchored to wood slats. Then our nail to the roof rafters of the original roof. These nails are what's holding the whole system up.
So there's nails? There were nails in this, holding this up?
Yes. And this is, again, going back to the original construction of that part of the building. No way to tell that, because you have plaster over whatever structure is underneath that. So basically, those nails, it appears that you, over the years, the wood can contract and lose its moisture, so it becomes dry. Nails are slowly can migrate out of the wood over the 114 years. And eventually, there's enough nails that slowly slide out of the wood, and it drops, the rest of the nails gangled up, so it drops.
So this could happen in the rest of the classrooms, then?
We have a deep concern that this could still happen in any of the building, part of the building that is constructed in that way. That's why West Jennings, we call him WJE, because it's a lot easier to pronounce. They actually use that acronym as well. Walked the whole building just to confirm and see and take a look. They're going to be coming out tomorrow as well to even do it more in-depth. And as Dr. McBride had mentioned, bring in more individuals to try to hit more of the school to get this reviewed as fully as possible. We are going to go through each room to determine that, to see if the rooms are safe. They will determine if those rooms are safe or not.
This is in the whole building?
We don't believe it is currently. We don't think so. We do believe it's just in the old 1914, 1920, that corner of the building. There's, I don't know how many.
But there's multiple floors, right?
I'm sorry?
There's multiple floors there, right?
Yes.
So you're going to check all the floors?
We're going to check every room of the building, not just that area where we know. There are some rooms that don't have plaster ceilings. They're just lay-in ceilings like this, which have hardly any load to them. Probably not a major concern. The biggest concern is wherever there is plaster, we're going to be, not only, it's not just going to be, take a look at it, okay, it doesn't look like. Because some of the ceilings are slowly migrating out, and they just, they look normal, right? They don't, it's not like, oh, this, or a piece of this junk came out, or some of it, because of metal ath kind of maintains its integrity as it slowly moves its way out of the joists. Once it gets to the point I can't hold it anymore, the whole thing comes down. So we can't just go look at a room and say, okay, that looks good. We're going to be doing some cutting into the existing plaster, sticking our heads in there, taking a look at it, investigating it to that level and to that degree to make sure those particular rooms aren't creeping down and deceiving us by just taking a look at it from the bottom down.
Were you able to see the nails that were in the studs?
Yes.
Or they're in the joists?
Yes.
Okay, so they were, so the steel structure that the plaster is attached to, it's a very heavy?
There's no steel structure in that part of the building.
In that?
No. It's all wood.
No, I mean, that the steel mashing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
So that's like, there's like small, like one-by-twos or something?
Yes.
Piece of steel.
Actually, a half by two inches, yeah.
Right, and those are hanging from the joists? You said those were nailed straight into the joists?
Those are nailed straight to the joists.
Just nailed straight, okay? I'm just trying to get a visual of how the ceiling was supported.
Do we have pictures of the incident?
Yeah. I don't know if I.
Yeah, I don't have any that I could display for you. There have been some online, and we did release some to the press.
So the photos that are circulating online are real?
Oh, those are accurate. Yeah, those are, those are accurate.
I just didn't want it to be like an incident that we had earlier where somebody was posting, like, you know.
Oh, posting, yeah. Posting something was not accurate, not actually a building. Right, no. Yeah, those are, those are accurate. And what this highlights is, you know, I just think history is something, you know, this is major, as Mr. Boris mentioned. It's something the community has to have a conversation about. You know, the strategy in the years that there were building referendums was to, you know, eventually leave Central. Whether that was demolition, or whether that was disuse, or whether that was reuse, but build a new building and, you know, have a different plan for Central. Over the past about 20 years, the board's strategy has been just maintain, maintain, maintain. And, you know, my contention to you is that that strategy can no longer go on. You just get to a certain point where something more substantial or major has to happen. And now, in a really dramatic way, we have to ask the question, do we want that building to remain as a school? And if we do, then, you know, obviously, there need to be actions that are taken. So when we proposed to you general classroom remodeling beyond, you know, we've talked price, $40 million to do HVAC, roofing, masonry, Americans with Disability Act, electrical. We've also said, you want to go beyond that to general classroom remodeling. This would fall under general classroom remodeling to ensure the integrity of every single classroom. That obviously would add to a renovation expense. So it's a difficult situation. It will require quite a bit of planning. You know, the way that I see it right now in the next couple of days is getting accurate information about what's happening in the building. That's the most important thing. But also, having a learning plan for students over the next couple of days that's the least disruption possible. At the same time, we might have to plan for freshman students to come right to this facility. But the size, two different bell schedules of the two buildings makes that very difficult. But not impossible, because as you know, we just can't go on forever with online learning. But not impossible, because as you know, we just can't go on forever with with online learning. That's not good for ninth graders. It's not good for some of the high school things that they're acquiring, so we'll have to put our shoulders into it. We've been creative before. I'm confident we would be creative again.
So now, I know we had a tender plan of what we were thinking about doing. So given this, how many different sections are there? I know you said nineteen twenty-eight, but is there, what, a nineteen fifty?
Nineteen seventy-six too, isn't there? Nineteen seventies?
No, you could probably defer to Gary Ward, but Gary Ward, you correct me, you've schooled me. Nineteen oh nine, nineteen twenty-eight, nineteen thirties, nineteen fifty-eight.
And nineteen fifty was the last time they did anything to that though.
So for example, when we, when we collected people, students, when we had all students leave the third floor and then our staff, we went to the nineteen fifty-eighth section of the building if we were meeting or lingering or talking, because we knew that that was the newest section of the building compared to the, I believe, yeah, right?
So now, no, go ahead. So that means we need to do more work going back to those older sections to make sure that they are structurally sound?
Yeah, it is in our, it's our impression that once we determine what rooms have that type of construction, we will be removing that plaster. And then we have to bring, put in, up new ceilings and lights because that plaster is above all of that.
So are we looking at a new dollar amount then?
Well, you know, architects came, you know, the directive from the board was to look between seventy and eighty-five million dollars. And that's what DLA came with tonight. You know, I think the conversation is open if that, that requires more. Or if the board, you know, your position is, well, we, we, we have to go as far as we can with that amount, right? We'd have to defer to you based on new knowledge you'll get with with the situation. But like Eric said, the next stage would be identifying rooms and likely having a demolition company come in and demolition, you know, doing a demo of that type of construction method and adding a new construction method.
Just, just so people don't, when they go through, hey, there's still plaster ceiling up there. There are some plaster ceilings up there that are more, are are a lot more integ- have a lot more integrity because they were built not with the wood slats nailed to the wood structure, but they were actually have cast or black iron with the plaster hanging on on from that, and those are a lot more stable and secure.
What percent of rooms have like the plaster ceiling?
That's what we're trying to determine currently. The question was, what percentage of rooms have the plaster ceiling that failed? That's what we're trying to determine right now. We did walk through quite a few today and we'll be continuing to walk through Friday and and into Saturday if we have to.
So that would all be done in that three to four day span?
What, I'm sorry?
Like that would be all done in that three to four day span of inspection or?
Just the inspection, right? And then assessing what, how we're going to approach the problem in a more earnest detail, because they are the experts and we're gonna wait to hear from them exactly what the problem is and then they'll come up with their solutions for us to determine what the best action, course of action would be.
So this is our first instance of a catastrophic failure, if I'm correct, right? We've never had something like this where we've had to shut down the school, or was there instances where?
Um, we, we, you know, we had a, an early dismissal here at both, at East Campus because of a water main break. We lost water, I think.
We had, um.
Doc, there, Dr. Green's there.
That actually, I think, was my first or second year of teaching, so that would be in ninety-seven or ninety-eight. We actually had a water pipe break on the first floor of Central, so we had a couple of inches of water. So that day we had to send freshmen only home, uh, because we had to shut down the water and we actually used for one day.
But it, it's never been, like, it, it, we dealt with it in one day. It's never been where it looks like we might, this might be like a two week thing at, like, best, right?
That, that would, that would be true.
Yeah, so.
Um, can I ask a question?
Oh.
Um, with the renovation of Central, I know we're talking if we still want it to function as a school building, with a renovation of Central, can we guarantee the structural integrity of the building to the point where our students will be safe post all of this?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay, so the bones of the building essentially, okay.
If this is, if this is a long-term issue, are we doing something for freshmen extra curriculally? Like, I guess many freshmen can't drive after school, so is that gonna be like an activity bus that we plan for freshmen to make it to sports and activities, clubs, et cetera?
Right. We, we weren't able to do that today. And right now, athletics, C W C, and activities are working directly with their advisors and working with our bosses to see what, what kind of solution, you know, can we come up with? It's freshman home and not every freshman has a way back. You know, if they arrive by bus here, they certainly are here, they can go to their athletics, they can go to their activities, but they don't necessarily have a way back. We have a slightly lucky break in that we're between seasons. Almost all of our fall athletics are completed and our winter athletics have not started. So we have just a small window where that's the case. So the impact is, is much lower.
I would like to ask a question. I know that all of the student board members on the board had a kind of, we're freshman year, we were all online, so having that experience of being online, I just wanna know, what is the plans for the freshmen outside of the e-learning, like, what will the next semester look like?
Yeah, we don't, Ms. Osse, we don't know. You know, it, it could range from two to three days of online learning and then, you know, we have enough information that it's safe to go back into the building and maybe sequester a certain section. It could be that range, all the way to it's, it's a much longer time. In that case, you will be working tomorrow on a plan to bring freshmen into this building. But the difficulty of that will be high and inconvenient to everyone, right? Because we have, you know, traffic issues to sort out. We have two different bell schedules coming in, an eight-period day, coming into a seven-period day. We have hallway congestion. This building is not, you know, structured for another thousand people. You know, so how would we move people, right? Yeah, how, how would we, cafeteria food service, you know, how would we move people, feed people?
So that would be the case if we had to replace the ceilings, right? More ceilings?
A, a lot of them, right?
Right, if we had a lot, or if there was anyone in this process that said, here's what needs to be done to make this building safe and it'll take this much time.
Okay.
You know, we just wouldn't bring anybody back into that building if there was any, any doubt about when we safely could, right? And so, you know, the next stage after three to four days would have to be bringing freshmen here, which will be, will take, you know, tons of creativity and a whole lot of patience. You know, because now you as upperclassmen are not impacted. Your day wasn't impacted except for maybe some snapchating and texting and what's going on. But your daily schedule could be significantly different, right? Just to manage that flow of people.
We had to get the all clear from the city, building inspector, we can come back in?
The, yeah. Right, so the Regional Office of Education, we've already reached out to the regional superintendent, uh, who's helping us with two things. One, just, you know, building worthiness and integrity. And then two, just how will the state school board look at this from an attendance point of view? Technically, if seventy-five percent of your students are physically present, and that counts as a full in-person attendance day, we're just getting verification of that. So Bob Morris, who, you know, just happens to be a Lockport resident, just happens to be on our central advisory committee, is actually the person from the regional office that does all of the school building inspections in Will County. He was on site. He worked with our architects. He's comfortable with the professionals that we're bringing in. He'll be the person that will review those reports and do an inspection himself of the building to say that we can occupy it again. So that's a responsibility the regional office has. So we're working closely with him and, you know, he'll do that review.
Right, even if we think it's safe, so he has to review it and verify that it's safe.
Wouldn't the city inspectors be involved also?
Interestingly enough, they're not. The sole jurisdiction for buildings is the, is Will County Regional Office of Education. It's interesting.
It's a state-run, uh, state or runs all of the building construction for schools, public schools. It's run by the state.
We, we asked the city building inspector today if we could get that help, just, just to have, you know, right here, right now, in town, you know, just like we have fire, asking that building inspector just eyes on, to make a snap decision about dismissing school. So that was very clear.
Has this guy inspected the building before at all?
Like, he has. Bob Morris, Bob Morris has inspected every school in Will County, so he's, he's been in this building, Central, every single one of them. And he's an architect as well.
At, at some point, somebody's gonna be held, be held accountable for what happened. I don't know who, but it happened on our watch as a board. On your watch as a superintendent. It was very bad. I had to pit my stomach all day. I don't know you guys, did too.
It's just very hard to find some of these things. Like, we can't really, like, pass the plaster. We can't really tell because in some inspections, some people, you just like look at it and then see, we are under the impression that if there was something like big, you would at least see cracks, you would at least see some water leakage or under anything. But we, you can't like, you can't always see everything that happens. And sometimes it just, you know, you can't really tell if there are like rusted metal beams within the walls.
I think right now our priority should be really focusing on the safety of freshman students and making sure that we're putting actual items to making sure that we're, making sure that the freshman center is getting to the place that it could be. I know a lot of freshmen are ready to connect back with their student body and I think that should be our first priority. And this has been a hard loss on all of us, so just taking this step in one by one, making sure that we're taking it slowly and gradually.
Yeah, I agree with Chelsea. You see the disconnect within our class too, just from being remote. You would never want, especially where conditions health-wise permit for them to be in person. You wouldn't want them to have the same disconnect and same disadvantages that we do, while also compromising their safety.
The worst-case scenario would be e-learning for any student body, I feel like, additional, additional community involved. It's just you and your computer.
I'm having just a little hard time hearing you, Akash, I'm sorry.
Sorry. The worst thing possible would be e-learning because there's no community involved. It's just you and your computer.
I agree with all of you. I mean, with the, our student board members, I really do, you know, but first and foremost, we have to make sure that that building is safe, you know, for our students to come in. And then, you know, and, and yes, I agree with you, Akash, you know, having them on e-learning, but, and then probably that's where the plan is gonna come in hopefully bring them in here to East and, and try to be like, very like Dr. McBride said, be very creative, you know, to try to do. And, and then, yeah, I mean, and it's not only the freshmen that are gonna be impacted, like Dr. McBride said, you guys are gonna be impacted. It's gonna be sophomores, juniors and seniors that are gonna be impacted because you're gonna have a thousand more students into your building. You know, you're gonna have those traffic, you know, congestions and you're gonna have new faces coming around. It's just gonna be very difficult, you know, for, uh, but, you know, I always say, this is temporary. You know, this is temporary. It's not like it's a long haul unless we hear from our forensic, you know, structural engineers that, you know, this is very, you just never.
Right, and you know, at this moment, we, we, we just don't know. We don't know if it's localized to three classrooms. We don't know if it's a floor. We don't know if it's every classroom that, you know, ultimately the decision is every classroom that has that construction method will replace those ceilings. We, we just don't know. You know, I was, that, like I said earlier, sounded note of caution about making a decision before you have the facts to make a decision. Sometimes people make inferences and they stick with those inferences, whether they're, they're based on fact or not. And that, in a crisis, that's, that's something I, I would always encourage people to resist. Because it, it's sometimes you lose your focus, like Ms. Osse said, you know, we have a thousand freshmen who need school services, right? And focusing on them is, you know, right here, right now, that's the thing that we as school people can focus on as other professionals do their work.
All right, well, you'll keep us posted.
I will keep you posted, you know, but I think our, maybe our conversation's not done because I do think, you know, we have DLA here. It is very dramatic in, you know, representation of, of, you know, this has been a twenty-year problem in the district. And, you know, unfortunately, it falls to, I think, you know, this is an illustration that it falls to you as board members to do some decision-making and to have a strategy. You know, you know, I've sounded a note of caution for the, the past year and a half that we might be at this point. And we have, we're back at the same place where the community was when we were looking at a four hundred and seventy-one thousand square foot brand-new building. You know, the estimates today, that would be about a hundred and eighty million dollars to build that. And so we're, we're back at the place of what should we do with Central campus? And that's really, I think, tonight, we, we need some guidance from the board. You know, like I said, in my tenure, the board's strategy has been maintain, maintain. We spend about half billion to a million dollars a year. We, every year, have an analysis and inspection of the building, respond to that. You might remember about two years ago, we had a more comprehensive list from DLA. We addressed all of those repairs. That was with fund balances again. So, so we did do that, but I think, you know, it's, there's nothing more obvious than what we're talking about right now, that we need something more substantial if we're going to keep that, that building open as a school building.
Right.
To ensure its integrity. The scope of which, you know, we need your guidance on, what is the scope of what we should put before you? And I also, you know, think there's enough urgency that, that if you're going to put a ballot initiative out there, which means you, you desire to spend more and release bonds, take on debt more than your debt limit, then, then you have to ask the voters what they, what they want to do. And, and time is, is really ticking on us now. I think the best election opportunity you have is on March nineteenth. That's a primary. You have a general election in November and you'll have to judge the tone and the tenor of the country of people in that election. And then the following election is really a school board election. And my experience has been that voters, when they're electing new board members, are, are not so inclined to vote for bond referendums. But if you really think about it, you know, just to remind the board, whenever you have a referendum, if, if, if it's approved, let's say, by the voters, it will take a substantial amount of time before you're even doing the major renovations because there's contracts, bidding, and preparation, specifications, and attorneys reviewing things. So, you know, if you had a ballot in March nineteenth and it was approved, we would probably, this would accelerate our work. But you would probably, you know, really not have major work being done until about June twenty twenty-five. If you go November, you're pushing it out a little bit further. If you went April twenty twenty-five, you're pushing it out to twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. So you're, you're moving things now. And then also, as you know, every year, from probably your own homeowner experience, you know, if you wait a year, you know, to have a major project done, it's, it's more expensive next year. Let's say March nineteenth, your ballot initiative, if you decide on a ballot initiative is not passed, we likely would be coming to you to issue bonds below your tax limit to address these very issues. Because right now, in this year, we're not going to have a facility that's suddenly going to appear in a permanent way. Heard a lot about Lincoln Way North High School today, which is a disused building, but that's very far away for our students. And it could only be a temporary location if we ever got real about that, that option. So we don't have a building in our district that could, you know, satisfy some of the things Ms. Osse said. So time is, is really no longer on our side. So I think we have to have a conversation tonight about, to be really candid with you, you approving a ballot issue on November twentieth. And we can kinda get into that. I think it'd be a good time, you know, maybe to pivot, Rich, if, maybe, what would a more, a scaled-back version of a renovation look like, you know, maybe turn it over to Rich?
Yeah, we, we've been charged to take a look at reducing the, the budget that we originally came up with and say, what can we do with the building with this reduced budget? I think, as Dr. McBride had mentioned, it pretty much goes into a, a priority level decision versus, okay, you don't, you're not necessarily gonna get everything that you want, so now we need to start looking at priorities and, and putting those pri- high priorities up first. And then we could always bid out the lower priorities and if it's too much money, then we don't necessarily have to, to bring them into the project at that time. So there is some choices still to be made, even though we might not think that we afford it. I want everybody to understand and realize that we haven't been hired to design the school. It has just been a, to get to a point where we can feel comfortable on how much we think that was going to be required based on the conversations that we've had throughout the summer. And also to take a look at the building and what, what the modifications of the building are gonna have to be to look like it might accommodate. The, it's, yeah, we do cost a little bit of money to go into the design and the district had elected not to do that, so wisely. So just wanted to put that caveat out here. It has not been designed yet and it might refine it even better so that we're more efficient about what we're showing you. But that's why the numbers have to be a little bit flexible here where we're talking because we, we just don't know yet exactly what that building's truly going to look like. Rich has done a tremendous job of taking a look at the program that we've been given. How can we put that program into this existing building at the reduced budget and has come up with some really innovative ideas to make that happen? And that's what he's gonna be presenting you to today in a more summary and a succinct way. So with that, I think I'll leave it to Rich.
Sure. This is kind of a summary of what he's going to be talking about.
Eric's passing out a summary here and I'm just going to highlight a few key points. So as we first mentioned here, we took another look and kind of pared back a few things. So at the very bottom of the sheet, there's a couple of design revisions. I'll point those out. One of the things, we did add three health classrooms. Previously, we already, what we were talking about was pretty much maxing out the building as-is. So adding three more classrooms certainly another challenge, but we were able to address that. Another key point was keeping the library in the current location where it is now. That sort of pairs back on the scaled project a bit. We were able to keep the little theater in its current location. So that's another potential savings of space as well. We also talked about keeping the main entrance where it is and addressing that with an ADA entrance and a new secured entrance, but up at that level. And then we also pared back the scale of the revisions to the lower-level cafeteria commons. So that's just a, a highlight of the major changes. And then, then we'll talk about the improvements overall. So, and we'll get into the details of this in the plan, but through all this concept design, we are able to get a twenty percent increase in classroom space. That was one of the biggest factors in the original design as well as carrying through on this one, getting those classrooms bigger. They go from about forty thousand up to almost fifty thousand, so about twenty percent increase there. We were able to get all the departments together on a floor, on the same floor, in the same general area. The academy and CCC grows by forty-five percent. The multi, multipurpose spaces increased by seven percent. Staff collab, staff collaboration spaces increased by sixty-six percent. That seems like a really big number because it's starting from such a small number. Almost nothing really, so. Admin spaces grow a little bit to accommodate that secured entrance. Guidance office, student services increases by thirty-eight percent. And then toilet rooms increased by almost sixty percent, which is a big ticket item as well for accessibility and just use of, of those facilities. But then I really want to point out as well, there are still some deficiencies. Like I said even before, we are really maxing out every inch of this building that we can. And bringing in three health classrooms certainly adds to that challenge as well. So I highlighted the improvements and as, as kind of the main priority, but there are still some deficiencies. That graph on the top shows existing, what's there now. Recommended is what we would propose if there was a new brand-new building with no limitations. And then proposed is what we can actually fit. So the first section is what we can actually get. The deficiencies are what, what is lacking from what we really would like it to be. So science is still a little bit undersized, seven percent under. World Language is, is under by thirteen percent. Business under by twelve percent. Special ed undersized by twelve percent. FCS, we, they have child development, which is two classes, but there's just not a space for one extra classroom for that, so that's. And again, this could all change, but just highlighting, there are some, a couple of things that are missing.
And that was from recommendation, not from what they currently have.
Yes, or, well, that doesn't, they share, a lot of these programs already share spaces. They could certainly still do that, but, you know, at least to dedicate their own. There's certainly the ability to share. This is all based on using the room six out of eight periods a day, I should point out as well. Flexible multipurpose spaces, again, we increased those by seven percent, but they're still about fifteen percent short of what we really recommend. And that's open hub spaces for collaboration, breakout rooms. We got a couple in the plan, but again, we're just maxed out for space. So we'd really like two or three of those on each floor if we could. But again, that's still a little bit tight to fit. And that's staff collaboration. They said they increased by sixty-six percent, but they're still almost thirty percent short to get a spot for each staff member somewhere in the building. So again, just, that's a couple of the key points. And then we'll look at this in plan here, what that actually looks like.
Some of the major changes that we did from the last plan that you're going to see were the, at the last, the bottom part of the design, we revisited from the September eighteenth board meeting. We added three health classrooms that Rich had mentioned. We kept the port room where it was currently, saved some money there. And then the little theaters remaining where it's at. And then keeping the main, main entrance, we, we're trying to see if we can make that work. Again, areas that where we could save some, possibly save some money. And then the caf, cafeteria and commons remodeling area, that was definitely reduced majorly in, in scope of work, so save some money with that.
So we've seen the existing, we're just going to focus on the new proposed here. These are a little bit more diagrammatic than last time, just to, again, focus on bigger picture, not the fine detail. We're much more about where kind of general spaces are as opposed to the fine detail. Again, that's the lower level, just again, as Eric just mentioned, reworking that cafeteria in place, keeping that a little bit more minimal. Next, so the first floor. First floor here, getting all of the business, tech, and foods, or family consumer sciences, again, on one level here, as well as world language. Reworking the academy and CCC, where the existing wrestling pool is and filling that area, dedicating all that's based to CCC and academy. And then again, like I said before, getting in staff spaces where we can. It's something, but it's still not quite what we really hope for. So that's the first floor.
Another cost savings, as you can see, the commons area is dramatically changed from what we had originally. And then that entrance in from the west parking lot, that is now pretty much untouched, so we've saving some money there. We were trying to convert that into a secondary ADA accessible entrance. We're now trying to focus more on the front entrance and thinking that that might save us some money. Again, all of this is speculative and when we start, actually start programming and designing this, we can fine-tune all of that and make it all really work. But again, just conceptual ideas here, and that's a shift there, that where we can think that we can save some money.
On the next floor here, the pink, dark pink and light pink, that's the main office and guidance, student services, kind of where they are now, but expanding those. Filling in that second floor where the auditorium is. So exactly how that happens is to be determined, but filling that in with some of those extra PE spaces, including health. So kind of that area there, that's where some of that extra space comes from. As we mentioned before, maybe the little theater, pretty much as-is, is another method of cost savings there. Math department up here at the top of the plan, existing gym to a main. And then social studies in the center of the plan here. Again, sprinkling in some of those breakout rooms and staff as, as much as we can, but we're still just a little limited on space. And then third floor would be science up on the top here and then English down below. Again, the board stating as-is, it's a cost savings. Sprinkling in those staff rooms as much as we can as well, a couple breakout rooms. This would be that one open hub, the kind of the only spot that's open for, in the building for, to make that happen. But that kind of space is something we'd like to stand each floor if possible. And then the paint is, just showing those toilets, kind of double in size to meet PDA and just the plumbing of the facility.
You know where the plaster ceilings are on the third floor there?
Yeah, right, right there.
Where did the incident happen?
This piece is the only.
The incident happened right there. This one is questionable and this one is, that one's been, yeah, this one's questionable. Yeah, definitely could happen here. So this building, I believe, right in here is the oldest building, part of the building.
What's the proposed budget on this plan?
Seventy-eighty-five million. So we, we tailored the design changes to match a seventy-eighty-five million dollar range of Dr. McBride.
Okay, thank you.
And just getting to the point of, do we have enough money now that we have plaster ceilings that we're going to have to take care of? Part of our budget, we, we worked with several hundred-year-old buildings in the past and we know that you're going to run into things that you just don't know. You can't see iron walls, you can't see above ceilings, you can't see what's inside a pipe, those kinds of things. So we understand that, so we do add some money into this budget already to accommodate, hopefully, as much as we're going to have in that. So obviously, as I mentioned earlier, priorities are what we have to look at now. What's the most priority? Obviously, I would think integrity of the building. Let's make sure that is set and, and established and then we work from there. We do have a particular line item that just addresses that of the existing building, to get it up to a, a, a quality that makes it a viable building for the next seventy, seventy-five years. On top of doing what it needs to be done academically to get the classrooms into the building as needed to do their education.
Yeah, questions, you know, for Peter, Rich, Eric? You know, hopefully they've given you a kind of sense of what a scaled-back seventy-five to eighty-million-dollar proposal is. And just, just to be clear with the board, you know, it's well above your debt limit. That requires voter approval. And, you know, I can show you sort of the impact on that. We did the financial, you know, asked for some financial analysis on that. We also have the kind of type of language we, we would look at as a board. And it isn't the kind of situation where you can say, well, you know, we're asking the voters to approve seventy-five to eighty million dollars. It actually has to be exactly precise what, what kind of bond issue that you're asking, you know, permission to, to release. You know, it has to be a precise number, it can't, it can't be a range.
It can't be precise when this is in place.
Well, that's, that's, you would still have to do, you still have to give a number.
Right.
So that being said, it makes sense if they're saying it's seventy-five, eighty-five million. In my mind, in the finance conservative world, we say eighty-five million. Because that leaves you the room for exactly what you're saying. You don't know, right? I also, I guess, want to make sure that we all understand that, like, the issue we're dealing with with the ceiling, while it, it does emphasize that we need to do more work, like, we need to immediately take care of those things. So we're not, like, waiting until we pass a referendum to fix plaster ceilings. In any, if the reports say that we need to fix things in these classrooms, they have to be done now.
Yeah.
Like, that's the kind of, that's the kind of thing that we talk about when we're talking about, we need to leave room. We may use fund balance for this. Bill's budget did not budget for a forensic architect or this environmental science, you know, testing of the materials and any demolition work, any work we have to do. Those are the kinds of things that we use fund balance for, right? So.
And, you know, this would certainly be an insurance claim, but there's a lot to work out, you know, to see where that insurance claim all would, all would come in.
And what I don't know is whether the insurance, like, the insurance claim may cover the incident. But if now our report says we really should proactively fix the other things, it's unlikely those are going to be covered, right?
Right, exactly. It'll, it'll cover the impact, but not choices, choices we make. And just to give you an example, we've worked with Chapman and Cutler, a law firm that specializes in bond referendum language. So just want to give you an, an example. This language has to be very precise. This is a draft. You know, we just told it the upper limit of your revised, you said seventy-eighty-five million dollars. This proposal is seventy-five to eighty. But this is a sample of a proper ballot issue and it has to be very specific. So the district is constrained by its language. Shout the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District Number Two-O-Five, Will County, Illinois. Alter, repair, renovate, equip and improve the site of Lockport Township High School's central campus, including preserving and protecting the exterior of the building, veterans foyer and main gym. Replacing and improving HVAC and major mechanical systems. Renovating and updating instructional areas and classrooms, improving accessibility to comply with the Americans with Disability Act. And issue bonds of said school district to the amount of seventy-five million, eighty million, eighty-five million, for the purpose of paying the costs thereof. So it, it does, kind of to your point, in, in many ways, in any building project, we're always estimating because, you know, even if you had detailed architectural plans, you could find there's cost overruns, there's unexpected situations. So we still, you know, have to give the voters, this is how many bonds, you know, the bond amount that we plan on releasing, and we're seeking permission.
We, we give ranges now just because we're so far away from the actual reality of it and we don't know how it all is going to pan out. We never really know the number until you go out to bid and that's your number. It's not like you can go buy a car, you know, you know what the price of that car is going to be. Next year is going to be different, right? So when you build, when we're doing this work, it's all custom up. It's not, it's not another type of work like this. So you don't really know that price until you actually go out on the market and ask people how much you willing to pay. How much do we need to pay you to do the work that we're showing you to do?
And with a project of this size and trying to do it with, within keeping the students in classrooms and things, you do it over multiple phases. You may have multiple phases of bids, right? So you really, you may know part one in the first year or two, but you may not know part four.
Labor and material costs could change wildly from one year to the next.
As we know in last year, the inflation rate went up eight percent. So those things we can't just predict. So we try to protect the district with buffer, right? To make sure that we can accommodate a lot of that.
With, so baked into the estimate are contingencies, all.
Correct.
And it still costs us money if, you know, if we were to just abandon Central, we would still have to do some maintenance of a kind because we can't just, like, allow it to deteriorate and collapse, correct?
Unless you built a new building and you did a demolition.
Yeah, so you would.
Or you did a sale of some sort and someone else, you know, took over that reresponsibility. The tough situation we're in as a board right now is you don't, you don't have that on the building.
Yeah.
Right, your options are, are somewhat constrained, you know, by just, you know, decisions that have been made in the past.
Exactly, even from our, you know, Citizens Advisory Committee that we, that we asked, you know, and they had, you know, multiple meetings, they had tours and everything. I think the community all said, we want to keep Central as our school, you know.
I mean, this in the best way possible, but is there a way that after the incident that happened today, we can re-poll?
What do you mean re-poll?
Like, re-ask that, if, see if anybody's opinions about keeping Central.
You know what, I, I was going to make that comment today too, because of course, you know, in, in the grocery store, you always have parents, there are mothers, right? But of course, they all heard about Central and it's almost like, you know, as soon as I walk in, it's like, you know, should I just turn back around? But it's almost like I just got, and I kid you not, every one of those parents that I, that came to me, they all said, let's go for that referendum. We don't want this to happen. And, you know, and I've always said before, when we were talking even the previous months before, what happens if that boiler goes out? How are we going to house those three thousand students? You know, I never thought about a ceiling collapse. And I, in my mind, I was always thinking about that big boiler because I know that Bill Thompson, every month, it's like, okay, something's happening with the boiler. We need to order this part, which that boiler is not, you know, they don't make those parts anymore. I mean, you know, you just can't call the phone, it has to be custom-made. So that's my fear all the time, it's like, that boiler going out, you know. But yes, I mean, and not only from that community, citizens, I mean, they came back to us and said, yes, we want to keep Central. You know, I mean, we've heard from the students, you know, when we had that June workshop, I think it was a big, you know, with our architects, we want to keep Central. You know, they came out with some great ideas. I mean, but everywhere I hear, you know, in the community, it's like they want to keep Central. They want to invest Central, you know, just to keep it as a school. And I know you've been to all those tours that, you know, throughout the summer with us and everything, just basically you and I. But yes, it was always, you know, we've had a, a lot of people.
I'm just concerned that sentiments must have changed. I, I'm pretty sure.
I, I don't think so. I really don't think so. I think it, what it does, it, it made the turning point right here because now it essence, it made them, it took a ceiling to collapse to make them say, we need to do something, et cetera.
To wake them up.
We need to do something.
There's a demand now, right?
Now it is, exactly, exactly. Because like even Marty said, what if, what if it had happened during this school?
I don't want to rush into a decision either.
No, but I mean, what would have happened, this?
But at the same time, we can look at putting the referendum on the ballot as polling our community. Yes, you know, say both the referendum down. Yes.
So I want to give them that opportunity. Because I don't want to just say, you know, let's just put it on the bonds for us to put that. But then, you know, we're going to have people come back with, well, you never gave us that opportunity to really invest more into Central.
We just have to, just note, Ms. Johnson has to leave for the evening. So we just have to have the minutes reflect, you know, her exit and get home safely.
Can you collect those other ballots?
Oh, for delegates.
Okay.
And.
Did you have something?
I do have something for you. And if I could ask, if you could just get the folder and then just, you know, if we could get the badge for Mrs. Johnson, if you could help me out there, that'd be great. And, and I think, you know, that's something that you've talked about. That's something that certainly the Citizens Advisory Committee has talked about, that, you know, ultimately, this is a community. that, you know, ultimately, this is a community decision, you know. The way that we, you know, express that is through the democratic process of voting. You know, in many ways, this is, I would suggest, it's certainly bigger than me. It's bigger than the board. It's a decision the community has to make about its identity, about its future, about where it wants its children to go to school, what look it wants to have, you know, in the future. And one way that people express that is, is through voting. If, if that was not approved, like Mrs. Kreuz said, you, you still, as a board, have to take action on that building. There's just, there's just no choice. And I would even submit that if a ballot measure failed, you'd have to take some minimal. You're, you're more constrained money-wise. You, you're doing much less than what our architects are proposing to you on that building to secure it for another fifty to seventy-five years. But you would probably be in a situation where you would have to, have to take action. The, the question that would, I think, lurk over us is, is that enough action to, to get that building to where, where it needs to be? That's, that's what we're gonna have to investigate a lot. From the financial point of view, if you go back to the drawing board with PMA Financial, we asked them these different thresholds now. On the very bottom, ninety-five million to one hundred and fifteen million, that was the top of the line, putting everything in. When you saw that on October sixteen, you just, you directed us and you felt that that was a heavy burden.
What, what was it? What's the bottom and top number range?
The bottom number is if you had a referendum for ninety-five million or one hundred and fifteen million. And if you look all the way at the bottom of those two squares, you see the median impact on the average taxpayer. So, if you did a twenty-year bond, it's two hundred and nine dollars. Twenty-five-year bond, it's a hundred and eighty-nine. For one hundred and fifteen million, it's for twenty years, it's two hundred and fifty-three, and for twenty-five years, it's two hundred and twenty-nine. So, we went back to the drawing board and gave you some thresholds using PMA, working with PMA. Sixty million, seventy million, eighty-five million. And, you know, the difference there where you see twenty years or twenty-five years is that the length of the bond, the, the length of the, the loan. You know, it's obviously to be more costly to the median taxpayer if you pay that loan back in a shorter amount of time, as opposed to a more expansive amount of time. So, in the range that you're looking at right now, seventy million to eighty-five million, you're talking about a, you know, if you went with a twenty-five year, it'd be a hundred and thirty-nine dollars per year versus for eighty-five million dollars, a hundred and sixty-nine. And obviously, if we're talking eighty million dollars, we're somewhere a little lower, lower than that. I would probably likely recommend that you do a twenty-five-year bond. If, if you propose that, the reason why I would think that is you would hopefully create, you know, enough integrity to give that seventy-five years more of life. So, if you're thinking fifty or seventy-five years, a twenty-five-year bond is, is lower per year on the taxpayer, and you're hoping to occupy that space for, for many years to come. One caveat is, if you had a successful bond referendum, you have to occupy that as a school for the term of your loan. So, whether it's a twenty-year bond or twenty-five-year bond, you would have to occupy legally that building as a school for the term of that loan.
As a full school or as a?
As, as you're using it now. You'd have to use it with the intended purpose that you went out to the voters.
So, you could scale back the number of students?
You could scale, scale back the number of students. You could, you could change programs. You know, you could come down line and suddenly people say, we're gonna have seniors go there and everybody. But you would still have to operate it as a school. You know, you couldn't, you couldn't sell it. You couldn't repurpose it as a community center, an art center. You'd still have to use it as a school.
Is there any way that we can use it as like a community ser- center after hours?
Oh, sure, right? It's primary purpose. You know, we do that with the CWC. It's primary purpose with after remains of school. So, I don't know of any of those financials, you know, what, what we, I, you know, I, I think we're in a, you know, time is of the essence, because once the board approves a ballot initiative, you need to give a Citizens Committee time to, to, to start, you know, educating the public. Why is the school board doing that? Obviously, just to, you know, make sure everybody understands, the, the, you know, administration, you know, the school board members are also limited, even though you're politicians, you're limited in, in what you can do politically. We certainly can't use any district assets, email, mailing, any district funds to, to support the referendum, because it's a political issue. And so, there's also, you know, if you went with March nineteenth, that's not a tremendous amount of time to give a group of citizens who might be behind this, like you said, Anne, much of a chance to get the information out to folks. You know, our desire, what our recommendation to you would be that, you know, if we look at this language, that, that we prepare language for you to approve on November twentieth. And again, we, we would recommend the March thirteenth election. It does give you at least, you know, another backstop. If, if it passes, then we know the, the work we've gotta do. If it doesn't pass, then you would be at a fork in the road, whether you issue bonds under your debt limit to work, do work on Central and significantly scale back. Or if you go back to the drawing board and put another ballot measure on in November. So, you'd have to, those are some decisions you'd have to make.
And it's the point that the board, you know, if the board approves a ballot question, a resolution with the ballot language in, in November, is at that point that, like Dr. McBride said, that we can't spend district resources to promote the referendum. What we can do, however, is give factual information about what the cost would be, what the extent of the project would be.
What the, the plan is.
Correct.
So, really, tonight, you know, we need, you know, our architects are saying seventy to eighty million dollars. I would agree with what Mrs. Kreuz said. I'd be more conservative on that, because, as you might notice, when you get into debt, the difference is, is not a giant difference. I think when we get, you know, if we were eighty million dollars, we would see that there's, there is obviously a difference. I'm not, you know, trying to say there isn't a difference, but there's obviously a difference. But right now, with a multi-phase, multi-year project and contingencies, we would recommend that your ballot measure is, is eighty million dollars. You might feel differently. You might feel that it should be eighty-five million dollars. But we're really basing it on what our architects are recommending tonight. And so, we just need a little recommendation, you know, this is the point, we never want to put the board in a position where, you know, there's something we're asking to vote on that we haven't had discussion. But as you know, we've, we've really been in discussion for about a year and a half now on this, so, you know, we, we just need some agenda direction of, do we bring this back to you as an agenda item? And if we bring it back, what, what should this look like?
Can you go back to this chart right here? I didn't, I'm just asking what the bottom number means. Is that the monthly?
No, that's.
No, that's annually. Thanks for asking. That's, that's per year. So, in essence, what that is, and, and I think I'm looking at the, the place that you're looking at, Mr. Borisma. You're looking at estimated median impact. Is that the line you're looking at?
Right.
So, that line represents the estimation of what the average taxpayer would, would experience an increase.
Annually.
Annually.
The LY means levy year.
Levy year. So, it's an annual increase, not a monthly or a, you know, twice a year.
And it'll go up and down based on assessed property value.
Correct. That, those numbers are based on the median home value, which per the American Community Survey is two hundred and sixty-seven, seven. So, that's not EAB, that's value.
EAB being different and usually lower. Gosh, I just thought I hadn't escaped.
Sorry.
No, that's quite all right, you know. And so, across that bottom line and all of those different panels is, is where you, where you see that, that impact, right? What that means. Oh, I didn't notice. What, what that is, is that is the, the community burden to make these additional payments. And we are constrained. We, you know, like, we said, we have a debt limit. We can't, can't, you know, exceed that debt limit unless we get voter permission. And that's really looked at more annually, how much a year, given our size, our budget, our funds, can we, you know, budget towards debt service, so.
So, what exactly are you looking for from us?
As far as giving, uh, the, giving this.
Kind of direction as a scenario?
Yes.
Right. I would, I would say to you that time is of the essence, that if you, if you are, you know, I think you're at a crossroads. I think you could take this off the table and direct us to do everything we can to ensure that the building is occupiable. And you'll look to the future to decide if you'll renovate or build a new building. But I, I would say that that strategy has gotten us to this moment. So, you're either that direction, or I would say time is of the essence. And if you're going to go for a referendum, we need to approve some kind of ballot language that we can start having a broader conversation about. The key to that ballot language is right down in that lower left-hand corner. What, what amount are you asking for? You know, our architects are saying between seventy-five and eighty million dollars. I would certainly encourage you, given what we've seen with projects, talking to other superintendents, mayor of Crest Hill, when they built their, they went to referendum for their new city center. They had to deal with the cost overruns that they didn't expect when they went to referendum. You know, I'd certainly say eighty, you know, you might say eighty-five million dollars. But I, I just don't think if you approve something in November, if your will is to go for a referendum, I, I just think if you wait till December, you're really not giving, you know, this ballot issue a fighting chance to have a conversation in the community and educate people about what you're asking. So, you're, you're at a crossroad. I think you're there tonight about, you know, tabling the strategy entirely and going back to the drawing board, and obviously, you're not voting tonight.
We're missing three people tonight, too.
Right. Or going, you know, going into, into a ballot referendum.
I mean, I mean, even with the absence of those three people, we've been talking about this for the last, what, year and a half, you know? And we've been having the tours. We've been having those conversations. We've had our architects here a couple of times. So, it's just come to the point now where we have to, and, and yes, we, you know, I, I think we're all in agreement that Central does need a major renovation, and we can't do it, you know, just on our side alone. And I would like to give our taxpayers that opportunity, you know, and like, as I was saying, to poll the pla- poll the people, you know, on it and give them that opportunity to say, yes, we want to do that, you know? And, and just from my perspective, I really would like to see a referendum, you know? And let the taxpayers decide. You know, I, I don't want to say it's, it's their building, you know, it's, it's our community.
And I think I've said this at previous meetings before as well. I would like to see the taxpayers have their say in what happens, so.
Exactly. Let's give them that opportunity.
I think it's a little rude not to clarify that Michael has action called, so we're really only missing two people. Like, he is here.
But we hope, we hope we haven't lost you, Mr. Travis.
Like, like, we kind of just forgot he was here, but.
He's been very quiet.
Are you still there, Mr. Travis?
Yeah, okay, so.
We believe you.
I just, I just wanted to.
All right, Mr. Travis, any, um, any comment? I'm sorry, apologize. Any comment?
And I think, I think that's you, Mr. Travis. Do, do you have any comments?
Yeah.
What, what's on, what's on, what's on your mind?
And I, you know, I apologize not being there, you know, due to work. And I agree, uh, give the taxpayers the, uh, the voice. But my concern is, you know, the safety of the, the, not only just the, uh, taxpayers, the taxpayers, but, you know, the, the kids, they go there. You know, I always said I'm, I'm for saving Central. You know, that's my voice, and doing whatever we have to do. But, you know, it, it, it is coming down to the vote, the vote of the taxpayers, so, you know, that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
Is there any draft, you know, financial number that, that we should come back to you with?
No, I mean, I feel like the.
So, when we talked in October, it was between forty million and a hundred and fifteen. Now, we're at sixty to a hundred and fifteen, plus whatever might be added up to.
Right. In October, we had a presentation where, I think it was October second. I'm getting my October's messed up next time. We took a look at what would be the top of the line, ninety-five to a hundred and fifteen million. The board just felt, given these financials, that was just too much of a burden. So, we came back on October sixteenth with a scaled-back version and then asked them to come, you know, and present, what would that scaled-back version look like now? So, that, that's where we're at, somewhere between seventy-five and eighty million dollars to, to do this project, you know, the most scaled-back version of, of, you know, what, what, you know, DLA is presenting. So, we, so we just need a little bit of direction of why, you know, that number in the lower left-hand corner, I guess we need to hear from the board. We hate to bring to you, you know, one, if you don't want that on the agenda on November twentieth, you, you really decide that. Two, what is, you know, you've heard seventy-five to eighty, and we, we would probably recommend eighty. But, you know, that's, we, we just, to prepare the agenda for November twentieth, we want to make sure your questions are answered. We want to make sure we're putting something for you to vote, that you feel confident voting on. But we, you know, we, we, you know, I, I guess I can't stress enough, there is a pressure of time. Right now, in, in more ways than one. Time for the community to consume a referendum issue. Time to address the issues at Central and its future. Time to weigh if it's going to continue as a school building. If it's not going to continue as a school building, if that's the decision of this board, then we need a lot of time to start talking about a, a new building. But as you can imagine, a, a new building to house our freshmen is five years out. You know, that would, the political process, the building process.
So, we'd have to repair the building as is right now to last five years.
Right.
Until we can start construction on a new building.
Right. And that is, even if, you know, the voters would approve, you know, something that's double this cost. And those costs only rising, so that's.
I mean, and I think, you know, just in, in the past, you know, just when I worked in that referendum, building bridges, you know, and it failed every time, you know, it really did. And I don't feel like putting.
What was that that failed?
The referendum to buildings.
The building, for the new building.
When, what was the last?
Two thousand and eleven.
Yeah.
And it was like six or seven years. I mean, and we kept putting it every year.
If you voted yes, then you wouldn't be having this.
Yeah, that's, that's true, Mr. Borisma. Here's the sort of history of, of referendums, just, I can kind of put it in the agenda item for you.
Yeah. So, that's a new building every referendum, six, seven, eight, nine, and odd?
Mm-hmm, yes. But you have to imagine that those were the costs at, at that year. Right now, it's probably triple. You know, so, yes.
So, I guess when deciding factor two will be in the coming days, we'll see what's going on with Central.
Yes.
I don't know if it's just that small section that they showed that may need to be redone, or that fits the whole upstairs.
Right, right now, yeah, right now, I would probably say that those costs are independent of these costs, only because we have to fix those costs, right? We don't have an oper- you know, an option of not operating Central. And so, we would have to repair what we believe is, is damaged or deficient. So, those, those repairs will have to take place now. So, it wouldn't really have that much impact on, on, on this analysis, right, on this project. This is sort of, you know, that and, and more.
I really, I mean, just with the time of the essence, I really do feel that we should put this on the agenda for the November, you know?
I agree. I agree.
And then I would say, you know, just to give us the time, you know, for our citizens, you know, referendum committee, that it's going to be established, you know. you know, to get the word out, because once we just, once we vote on it to put this on the ballot, you know, that's it. We can't really politically be out there saying, yes, vote, 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 yes. You know, even our ministers can't do that, you know? I mean, we can give out the information, we can give out, you know, questions, answers, or anything like that, but we can never really be out there supporting it ourselves, so. And like Mr. Travis said, you know, time of his essence, we need to move forward on this, because we've been.
Yeah, we, I, 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 I do believe that we need to move forward with this and come to some kind of.
Yes, I mean, and.
Appreciate it right away.
Exactly, and it's not something that we can say, you know, we've been talking about this for three months or something, this has been a year and a half, you know, that we've been having these conversations. So, yes, and now it's come to this point where we have to make that decision. And I, I totally agree, you know, with Michael Travis, it's let's put it on the agenda, let's go with the eighty million, you know, on it.
And, and obviously, this is a vote, like everything you do, you know, there's, there's time between now and November twentieth, so for a lot of conversation and analysis. You know, then obviously discussion at that board meeting, right?
Exactly.
You know, everybody's got to vote how they, you know, what, what they believe. So I'll, I'll take that as your direction, you know, I just want to honor that we still have public comment tonight. I, I want to make sure with, with our, you know, friends from DLA, if there's any questions you have for them. Obviously, you know what the hope is, is, you know, probably, you, you, I hope you're like me, that you hope that, that this, this damage is localized, it's manageable. It, we can get, you know, students back into school physically as quickly as possible. But obviously, we have to prepare, um, for the worst, right? Our union president reminded me of famous words I said in March of twenty twenty, we'll only be out one to three weeks.
So we're, we're coming back the twentieth, right? And Central will be fully functional by the board meeting, and we'll be happy to make that announcement.
We certainly hope so.
We hope so, we hope so. All right.
All right, thank you, DLA, we do have public comments, so I wanted to kind of leave that. Oh, you mean, yeah.
Yes, we're just going to do a few, like a little five-minute break for anyone, okay? And then we'll come back and we will do public comments, okay?
On this particular set of resolutions, I myself would recommend to you that you endorse what IASB endorses and you do not endorse what they are not endorsing. You know, without going into each, there's only seven resolutions this year. So Luann tries to get feedback from each one of you on these and then, you know, from whom she hears, that's really how she represents us in votes.
All right. Okay, moving on then, we're going into public comments. At each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comments section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30 available upon signing. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response at the time of comment does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. And first, we have Ms. Robin Borowski.
Yes.
Okay. You can stop.
Oh, and Ms. Borowski, you know, we certainly could go from there, but you know, usually sit right up here if that's okay for you.
All right, I took some notes. Some of my questions were answered. Some of the things were brought up. I do first and foremost want to thank Principal Green. I know you love that school. My daughter is my second student there. My son thrived there, he's a junior here now. I can't imagine what you had to go through today with your staff and I thoroughly appreciate how quickly you acted to get the kids out safely and make sure that they were home. I know you've probably not heard a lot of that today. Thank you. My biggest concern, so as I was sitting here, I realized that eight hours before the collapse, my daughter was in that classroom. That's horrifying to think that it realistically could have happened at any time. And I appreciate, like I said, the immediacy of addressing it and I know it needs to be expediently taken care of. What the parents are looking for is a potential realistic timeline. We know it's not going to be a few days. The kids have all these rumors going around, they have their freshman Snapchat, they're like, oh my gosh, we're not going to be back in school until after November or after Thanksgiving. My question is, I know we mentioned here potentially utilizing East to house them. What is the capacity of East campus? Can it house an additional 4,000 students safely while maintaining fire code and fire Is there a potential to use portable classrooms? I know they're not ideal. It is getting into winter, it'll be cold, you'd have to heat them. But those are ways to ease the congestion here maybe. I know my son has talked about, it's like trying to swim upstream. He's like, I don't know how kids go to the bathroom here. There's like parties in the bathroom, I don't get it. Could the lack of air conditioning and the recent extreme heat and humidity that we had at Central Campus have potentially added to the extreme swelling and shrinking of the wood and the ceiling? This technically to me is the second potential catastrophic issue. We could have had kids have significant heat stroke when they were in Central Campus in 115 degree weather this year. That's a huge issue and I know it will be addressed with the renovations at some point. But I don't agree with comparing any other catastrophic failure to this one. This could have killed children, it could have killed teachers, it could have killed janitors. Had a janitor been in that room at 10 o'clock at night, nobody would have known that person was there. That's horrifying to think of. The parents of the students, the parents who have students there, I think we deserve to have the reports of the asbestos and safety reports, building inspection reports made available. At this point, I don't feel safe having my daughter in any of the classrooms. And it's really sad because my husband graduated from Lockport High School. He was one of the, he was the last graduating class from Central, I believe in 1997. And that's the last year juniors and seniors were there. I did not, I graduated from a mile, but the, sorry. The history of Lockport High School is deeply seated in our family. I believe the community needs to know how catastrophic this was today, what the potential of loss of life could be in order to pass this referendum. We have a lot of older families in the community who are on budgets, whose median income is lower than what you purported up there, just as you have a lot of families in this community whose taxes are insurroundably higher than what were reported there and taxes are going to be impacted significantly. It's not going to be a couple hundred dollars per year for some families. And even that hundred or $200 a year is really going to impact people on limited incomes. I feel like the way to get the voters to potentially pass this referendum that is desperately needed to secure the safety of our students in our community is to make them aware of the gravity of what happened today. Transparency is of the utmost importance here. That's really all I have to say. I agree that I think it needs to be 85 million just to secure safety. The boiler in and of itself, that could, lord knows what could happen with that. We're talking about an amazing 114-year-old building that deserves to be a part of this community. I think that having the freshman center is such an amazing thing for our students. They get to be all weird and awkward together.
You have 30 seconds.
And I feel like we need to preserve it and fix it and keep our kids safe. So, thank you. Thank you. Oh, and I want to, these guys are awesome.
Thank you. We think so too. All right, next we have a Mr. Mike Carlson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So one thing I wanted to say was I noticed that your engineers passed out papers that we paid for. The public should have got a copy of those too, just as well as you guys did. I mean, I thought that some we should be looking at too. The other thing is, is you're looking for alternatives. Well, you're putting in, you're packing our students in a classroom that's unsafe, in a school that's unsafe, it's really unsafe. And I think that the best way you could do this is you have the window opportunity right now to go to Lincoln Way. Put them in Lincoln Way, take that building, have the insurance money, clean up that mess and sell it to the city of Lockport for a dollar. You have land in Homer Township, so you don't have to purchase land, you have it. And then you'll have a bigger parking lot for the staff and other after-school activities can have a parking lot and you'll have a better school. Everything is so outdated, 114 years old. I don't want to put my kids in there, I don't want to see the public put their kids in there. That is unsafe. It's an unsafe thing, it's a waste of our money, it's a money pit. We'll put all this money into it and then something else will go wrong. And the taxes, they're high, they're way too high. People can't afford what they see now, it's ridiculous. I mean, I understand you got to have money for the fields and this and that and it gets war and tour. What do you guys charge the Christmas crossroads to mark up the gym floor? I mean, do we get any money from them? I mean, shouldn't that, where does that money go towards? Shouldn't that money go towards putting floors in? I mean, you want all their alternatives, I think that's the best alternative you can get right there. Like, put them in Lincoln Way, they have the space. Then you don't have to have one or two specialized classes, you can have four or five of them and they can go in the hallway and roam around a little bit and go to the next class. Nobody's crowded in one place. What happens if you remodel all this whole thing and now the boilers are bad? So now you're going to spend another hundred and some million dollars on boilers. And there's no AC in that place, it's horrible to let those kids sit in there. I don't feel that that school needs to be around anymore. I think you should sell it to the city of Lockport and let them remodel it, revamp it, whatever, and make it a historical thing where you can go there and have activities or whatever, but I don't think you should cram another thousand kids in there anymore. I think that school should be done. That's all I got.
Next we need Melissa, Ms. Melissa Chandarana.
Oh, Ms. Chandarana.
Chandarana, I'm sorry.
Good evening, board members and community. Mr. Carlson, as you said, selling to the city of Lockport, that would imply that the city of Lockport would like that and then that is a burden on me as a taxpayer also as resident of Lockport. So that's something to think about. I'm sorry, it's my turn to talk. As I've come before, we spoke to you last month, there's some concerns about accessibility, security and safety in the Central Campus. And I'm here again today to speak to you about that. In September of 2022, the Central Committee was initiated. Fifteen months of tours, community education on some of the needs of the building and its history. Community meetings, including a day-long workshop in June, including student and faculty representation from every department, has taken place. We know that schools in Illinois rely on local sources to fund our schools. Our community does not have a diversified tax base. We lack retail, commercial and industrial, so the burden continues to fall on the residents and homeowners to fund our schools. How can we continue to keep good schools while keeping our taxes low with limited commercial development? We know that either renovation for 80 million or a new building for 180 million needs to be made. Although we may not want to rush into this decision, as Mr. Borzma says, an extended delay could further impact costs on another and similar to today. And the last question I have is, I know that you have discussed the materials. Where would the community be able to find those materials on the website so that they can educate themselves? And the asbestos is on the website, if you go and search the bar, you will be able to find the asbestos on the website. But I think in the process of being able to educate our community with the facts in regards to a renovation and what needs to be done to have some of those materials readily accessible would assist those of us who would like to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question real quickly? I was under the impression that Central is just so, requires so much year-to-year maintenance that we would be very hard-pressed to even give it away because most people would not want the burden of having to maintain it on a year-to-year basis.
Yeah, I don't want to take time away, you know, to be personally, Mr. Navara, from our speakers, but we have probed the Park District, city of Lockport. You know, neither at this point are interested in taking on the liability of that building.
Yeah.
And also, we worked with city planning, would it be desirable for developers? Not as a building desirable for developers simply because of exactly the burdens we're talking about, we're mediating that. So likely in that case, it would be demolished, it would be demolition. You know, that is the most likely trajectory. If you decided not to use that school building anymore, it would be demolished. But again, you know, you'd have to create, you know, you'd have to have a solution, you'd have to have a building that you can occupy for the long haul, you know, if you decided not to use Central.
All right, Mr. Jay Rhodey.
Young board members, that's great. So I want to give you guys a little bit of my background so you know where I'm coming from. I've been involved in the construction industry for just about 34 years now. I have spent most of my time in commercial, residential, some industrial, a lot of industrial, actually, I'm sorry, I.DOT and believe it or not, restoration. Now, with that being said, some of the restoration I did, believe it or not, in my time, was for schools, a lot in the city of Chicago. University of Chicago would be, you know, in fact. And their buildings are probably a little bit older than the building we have here. It's very costly to renovate a building of this age. That 85 million dollars that we're talking about, over five years, as labor rates go up, material goes up, it's a lot of money to be spent. And you know what happens? You never really get what you need. You guys are landlocked there at Central. Thousand students, you got 3,000 students here. You got 4,000 students total in 205, okay? Even if you renovate this, you're still landlocked, you're still at 4,000 students. In the event that our residents and we increase here in size, you're still going to need another school. You're going to have to have some kind of ability to expand. We throw 113, 115, at the end of the day, what interests, over five years, because it's going to be done over phases, and I'm well-versed in phasing projects as well, you're going to be probably at 130 million dollars. And what do we have to show for it? A school where we're still landlocked, now don't get me wrong, the nostalgia, hey man, the school's beautiful, especially when you get a picture and it's from the right angle, I get it, there's a sentimental issue there, okay? And like the previous person, the 33C school board member, Nancy that was here, she is right, if you go to the website, you will see asbestos-containing building materials, otherwise known as ACBMs. And we do have that at Central, they're defined and they're all over the place. That's something that needs to be looked into so we can be assured that none of these children that stayed in the building when this was, when I got there today, you know, asbestos spores, they get in the air, those kids should have been evacuated immediately, shouldn't have waited till 9:15, 9:30, should have been like a fire alarm. We call those areas hot areas. It's the first thing we do, we come across it, we pull out, we get it tested and it takes more than 24 hours to get it tested, I'll tell you that. I guess what I'm getting at is that you guys already own property in Homer Township. For Homer Township residents, okay, and Village of Homer Glen residents that are watching this, you're going to say, well, wait a second, we're going to flip the bill? Guys, you're already paying the bill. Homer Township accounts for 60% of the income that comes into District 205, okay? 60%. It's time. I know in 2011, Bob, you alluded to that, 2008, 2006, it was voted down to build a new school. But we didn't have a 130 million dollar renovation looming over us. If you guys get to a referendum, what you should be put on the referendum is, hey, do we build a new school or do we renovate a school? But here's the problem, when we look back at 2011 at 85 million dollars, what was the size of the school? How many students was that going to accommodate? Right now, we have to accommodate 1,000 students that are at Central, okay? When we got that price of 85 million, like Ann said, you know, prices have gone up, was that for 4,000 students? Was that for 6,000 students? See, you have to look at the details when numbers are thrown out there, you have to ask the question because a 6,000-student school is going to be a lot more costly than a 1,000 or 2,000-student school. Let's say we walk away from Central, we put a 2,000-student school in. That gives 205 the capacity of 5,000 students. You've only got four now. You already have expansion with more because you're not landlocked at these properties. Something should we consider. So that's what I want to talk about. I think that you guys really need to seriously stay away from the renovation. I've been involved in these projects, we call them CORs, cores, change order requests. They come in for unforeseen circumstances. They can drive that project up another 25%. I have the experience, I know this. Thank you.
Okay, next we have a Ms. Christina Carlson.
I have a couple questions, I have a bunch of questions, it seemed you guys did answer some of the questions. One of my questions was what time did the ceiling collapse? Somebody here said it collapsed last night, there was an alert. I'm just wondering why, I got a list here of maintenance people with a total of their salaries at 895,006.17, why weren't one of these people sent to the property to see what had happened? Am I wrong, did somebody, the woman that was sitting here that's in charge of finance did say that there was an alarm that went off? So my next question is, if that is true and something, it did happen at 10:30 at night, why were kids allowed in? Why didn't anybody go research why that alarm went off or what happened exactly? So what time did you guys find out about the ceiling collapse? Why were the kids even allowed in the school is a big question of mine. The fact that the kids weren't immediately taken out of the school, I work with mold or with lead and I'm sure there's lead in the building, it was disrupted. There was asbestos, I'm almost positive of that, I'm questioning that, we did send, me and my husband did send an email about the materials, asking for you guys to hire an industrial hygienist to get an air sample. I also heard you say that the air is fine, not sure how you got that, when it takes almost 48 hours to get a real air sample from an industrial hygienist. So I don't know if that was a miss, if you misspoke or if that's fact.
No, I didn't, I didn't say that.
Okay. So the air, you didn't say anything about the air quality or anything about the air today, tonight? Do we not have an air sample? Have you guys ordered an air sample? My child was actually in the room next to the collapse. After you guys knew that there was a collapse, you still allowed children, I don't care if it was two minutes, my child should have never been allowed on that floor. My child should have never been allowed in that school, like Jay Rhodey said, it should have been treated like a fire. Get them out of the school. Again, I deal with lead abatement, I understand the air quality and all that. We have people that, our guys have to be fit-tested with respirators and have to wear full suits, they have to, they have special places, they have to take their clothes off, it's no joke. So I don't think the public is fully aware of how serious this really is. Like Rhodey said, there is also asbestos in other areas, that's on your website, that poses a problem. If it's in the boiler, I think that was one of the areas, so we know there's problems with the boiler. What happens if something happens to the boiler? That's another issue. Did you guys turn off the AVAC after the ceiling collapsed or did you just let all the particles go through the whole school? What are some of my other questions? Again, I don't know how this was missed when you have almost a million dollars in salaries for maintenance, you have a whole team of people here who now is working with Wes Chaney Elsner, who is a fabulous engineer, so I'm glad to hear they are on the case, they are a good reputable company. Not sure why they weren't involved in this in the first place when there's a renovation being bid on, that is something that I would have had somebody look at 100-year-old building is the structural integrity of this building. So how come that was a miss? I want to know if there was any indication in any of the maintenance reports or anything that there was a leak, bowing, anything to the ceiling?
Give 30 seconds.
And, you know, I agree with Jay, renovation, I'm in construction also, and when you start doing projects, something this old and problems are going to arise and you're going to have change order after change order after change order after change order. We're landlocked, there's nowhere to go. I agree with Jay, I think that building of Homer High School sounds, it's got a nice ring to it.
Your time is up.
70% of us pay for it anyway, so let's do this now.
Next we have, let's see, Ms. Renee.
Thank you.
Good, okay.
I'm going to get you both in.
Okay.
I'm going to rewind back prior to the central issue, I wanted to go back to point one in the discussion. The turf being changed out really quickly, I want to bring that up. Empirical data, peer-reviewed studies show that there are carcinogenic compounds in the astroturf, in the rubber chrome is what it's called. The Netherlands are already banning it to be used in any kind of sports facilities, as well as other countries are going down that path. It's 1.5 to 3.7 times more carcinogenic compounds in that kind of turf. There's lead, mercury, benzene, arsenic, carbon black heavy metals, PFAs in that material. Amy Griffin, who is at the University of Washington, is a big advocate of getting rid of this stuff. It's disgusting, it's horrible, it's horrible for our kids. Also, there's ecological impacts, it cannot be recycled, it's hard to get rid of. Now, going to central issues. It's logical and reasonable to say that moisture, the expansion of the materials in the ceilings were causing it. I heard very briefly Ms. Carlson talk about mold issues, that's also something, mycotoxins, funguses, mold in the air, in the HVAC systems now that have been now exposed, I don't know if they were turned off as she mentioned. Asbestos has been commented on, but again, it takes longer than a few hours to get real testing for asbestos. Lead, lead is in the air all over there. I'm not even going into the replacing the school, building a new school, I'm talking about in the immediate, right now. It's not going to happen that they're going to be back in five days, couple days, it's just not going to happen. Air quality testing absolutely 100% has to be done, let alone can cause high blood pressure, brain kidney reproductive health issues in our kids. You're going to have future liability issues due to the exposure of these hazardous materials potentially in these children. There's also potential of other catastrophic failures. Nobody has mentioned anything about floor load, weight of the plaster falling to the lower levels, so you're also causing potential structural damage. Mr. Navara mentioned about how, oh, you have to go into the walls and see the beams. Are they going to be doing that when they're doing these analysis of the building's structure, capabilities, everything that they're doing? They can't do that over five days where they're breaking into all the ceilings, that's going to then need to be repaired as well because you can't just forget about it. When there's an accident, a car accident, everything gets loosened up, you can't just ignore that. Has the EPA, Health Department, OSHA been involved in this situation because of the fact that there is lead, potential damage to human beings there? I haven't heard anything about that, it's only been on a local issue. The EPA should absolutely already be involved 100%. Some things that the kids could be experiencing, especially the ones that were exposed to it for a longer period of time are headaches, stomach aches, stomach cramps, constipation, muscle joint pains, sleep disturbances, et cetera. Those are things that parents should be made aware of. If you see this in your children, you need to go find out if your child has been exposed to lead. It can cause permanent lifelong issues, even from small amounts, cause big permanent issues. Going into what happens, because we're not going to be back in a couple days, it's not happening, let's all be realistic here. E-learning, my son today, who does have an IEP, said, Mom, does that mean that we're going to be on computers because I don't want to get bad in math again? He's excelling and the thought of them having to go through this makes my stomach churn. I don't care if they have to stay in school a little bit later, shorten the day by 40 minutes because it takes longer to get to school, they have to be in school. They've already been irreparably damaged from what they experienced over the last three years because of COVID. We are not going to do this to them again. So we need to know a realistic timeline, parents need to be made aware of actual potential risks. This is liability, that's going to cost a lot, more than 140 million dollars for a new school in the future if we've got mesothelioma and other issues because of asbestos, lead, other things. So parents need to be made aware of what's going on. I absolutely agree with them, would you rather pay this amount of money with change orders or would you rather get a new school with state-of-the-art facilities with room to expand that we can be proud of as a community? It's like keeping a 114-year-old person on life support. We can do it, but should we? It absolutely should not be what it is. I think I've gotten through all my notes. I implore you to think of the long-term liability. This is not just about nostalgia and a building that's pretty and feels like Hogwarts when you get in there because you don't know which staircase is going to take you where. you get in there because you don't know which staircase is going to take you where. We need to
You have 30 seconds.
Be realistic, keep our kids safe, and parents need to be made aware of the potential risks of what happened today, and we need to look out for our kids for their mental safety, for their educational safety, and most of all, for their health safety. So, thank you so much for your time.
Announcements.
Announcements. Well, we'll wrap it up with just a few announcements of the board. Hey, very quickly, you just got a couple events. Next Thursday, we could use an RSVP because we have an all-time record response from senior citizens, so we need to know who's attending. So, if you're coming to the Gold Card Dinner, any board members, this includes you students. You know that senior citizens love to see students, so we would love to see you at the Gold Card Dinner. But if you are going, could you please let Kathy Maxwell know? It's next Thursday night, it's at 5:00. Just to remind you, board members, 5:00, we have a dinner with senior citizens, we're expecting about 150. It's kind of a nice time to visit, we get a lot of alumni. Oh, about 6:30, we then walk down to the auditorium and we see the fall play. It's a really nice time, quite actually. Thursday, November 16th, Sunday, November 19th, that's the ISB triple I conference that we mentioned. As you look through your materials, you know, the only, you know, it's a kind of a complex situation, a lot of events to be at. Kathy's done a great job really breaking down your agenda, so if you really, you know, take a look at that very carefully, we would appreciate it. And then finally, Monday, November 20th, is your November regular board meeting. Those are your upcoming events.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Do you want to have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw, second by Mr. Borzma. All in favor?
Aye.